It is 7:01 on September 4th, which is a Wednesday. Uh, this is Treaty of Nagaji calling being to order. We're going to start the top of the agenda with first responder monthly reports. So Honolulu Fire Department, do you have a representative present?
Dave, is it okay? Can I do a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please do a roll call to a determined quorum. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, when I call your name, please say here. Uh, Zane?
Present.
Watson?
Here.
Ozel? Ozel? Okay, uh.
Here.
Oh, okay. Uh, Nagaji's here. Pukumoto?
Here.
Lumen? Lumen, Clyde? Lee?
Here.
Joanne? Tom? Diane? Tom? Dan? Uh, Moylan?
Here.
DeMarco?
Here.
Uh, Kwanu? Patty? Fox?
Here.
Here.
Oh, here. Fox?
Here.
And Mishreki?
Here.
That's 11. We have quorum.
All right. Thank you, uh, Anson for helping me out with that. Uh, just want to let people know that, uh, for those who don't have their camera, cameras on, I can see your name. Uh, for those who, uh, do have your cameras on, for some reason, your name's not displaying on my screen. So, uh, I apologize if I identify you by, uh, what you're wearing or what your background is, but I'll do my best in that regard. Anyway, uh, now that we've determined quorum, let's head to the top of the agenda. Uh, so let's start with first responder monthly reports. Uh, item A, Honolulu Fire Department, please, uh, go ahead.
Hey, how's it? I'm Captain Jacob Nabajima, Engine 22, Manoa Fire Station. And I'll just go over the statistics from last month. We had two nuisance calls, then 49 medical calls, two motor vehicle collisions, two mountain rescues, and one hazmat incident. And then we have a safety tip of the month. It is move over for emergency vehicles. It says, "Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy. It is the law." It requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency. Investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change and make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, two lanes over, which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. And the emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, which is ambulance, ocean safety, three-way service patrol, tow truck, tow trucks, and some state and county vehicles. And that is the tip. Any questions?
Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. Uh, my question, I have a couple of them. One is, if you were stopped at a traffic light, let's say there were three lanes across, or, you know, on Vineyard or whatever, and you're stopped at a light and an ambulance comes behind you and you're stopped at a red light, but there's no other cross traffic coming? How do you get out of the ambulance's way? Do you just, if it's clear, go through the red light and, and pull over and open a place for him to get through? Or what do you do?
Usually, we try to, people try to squeeze out of the way, but if worse comes to worse, and you think if it's safe, I would just move forward some till you, there, you're cleared, but you gotta make sure it's safe. If not, don't move till the light changes. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I understand, but I would not want to have my car sitting in the middle of the intersection either. So, I'd wanna, if it was safe, go all the way across and pull over to the side, but I wouldn't want to just pull up a little bit and then I'm sitting there if cross traffic comes and blocking them.
Yeah, actually, sorry, Lieutenant Nakamura, I started barging in on the time cap, but yeah, absolutely. If, if you, um, if the light is, is red for you, but the traffic, the cross traffic is stopped and you can get over to the cross, well, I just saw this today, coming to work. Um, Kalakauan, Kalakauan, Kapilani. They, everybody stopped because they panicked because there, there was a ladder behind them. And especially ladders, they need, they need space, but nobody wanted to go across.
Right.
But if it's safe and you can do so, absolutely, you can go across that, uh, that intersection. But that's a decision that you're gonna have to make as a driver for yourself. Look both ways. Hey, is the cross traffic stopped? Is it safe to do so? Then, then do it, but don't stop in the, don't stop in the middle of the intersection, dude. Just go all the way across and then pull over to the right, you know, by central center.
Alright, thank you. And I have one question.
That's the easiest way to do it. Yeah. The main thing is to remain calm because even if you have a policeman behind you, most, you know, if they're going lights and siren fast, they're not there to give you, to stop you and give you a ticket. Just pull over to the right, let them go. Same with EMS and, um, and, and especially fire because those trucks are big. So if you can, um, give them, um, some, some space, it's good. But yeah, what happened today was terrible because they, all, all, everybody stopped and they panicked. And then there was a ladder behind them. So I'm like, oh, you know what? I gotta go in front and blast my siren, just tell them, just go across, go across. So that's exactly, eventually what, um, what happened, but then the ladder's like a minute later. Yeah.
Okay, and one other question I have for fire, is that okay, Chair?
Yes, Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, are we able, what process do we, as a board or as a community, need to do so that we can get a fire hydrant installed behind Noalani School that could take care of Wailea Ridge fires? Because there's no way to get water in there, and so the house is along there and the school is at risk for a brush fire because sometimes it really gets dry and yellow, and there has been fires up there. And I guess there's some homeless folks that are up there and they thought with cooking or campfire, they started a fire. What do, what has to happen? And what government agencies or what has to happen to really get a fire hydrant installed there? Where they have to bring in the water lines from Wood Lawn or whatever to finally get that there so we can address fires in that fire-prone area? Please, if you can shed any light on how we begin that process, then the board can kind of push at that or form a permitted interaction group or something to really push for that. Thank you.
So, uh, the Board of Water Supply puts those in and they usually put it in at certain distances that they feel prudent for us to create a fire attack. But where exactly are you, are you talking about? So you got Noalani School, you mean where they walk behind it? When they try to get to UH and stuff, that, behind, back there?
No, I, I want to be able to deal with brush fires or wildfires that happen on Wailea Ridge. And Elton, somebody help me who knows more about the geography of that. And we've had fires up there that we can just see through the valley, um, where it's just burning, and the risk is if it'll come down a mountain, which also has yellow dry grass, and then impact the school or residences. So, Elton, try to help me out here.
Uh, Chair, if I may?
Yes, Elton, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not that familiar with the area, but people who are, I don't know if there are anybody, anybody from Pamoah Road or, uh, Tom Heinrich is also interested in this particular issue, so I don't know if Tom is here. Uh, but I, I'm familiar with Pamoah Road, but, uh, my relative did not live all the way to the end. I, I think you're thinking of, um, not so much Noalani, although that's the backside, that might be the backside of Noalani. But along Pamoah Road, closer to where St. Francis was at the end of that road, that might be the road that's closest to Wailea Ridge.
Uh, Ellen? So, so we, we got a call right now, but I'm not, so are you talking about having a hydrant? Uh, you mean on Wailea Ridge, on the trail?
I don't know where it could be located, but something to fight the brush fires that occur on Wailea Ridge because it could impact like Pamoah Road or residences or the backside of Noalani School or...
Oh, oh, sorry, Ellen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer this to the, uh, our, uh, admin. We'll, we'll go and they'll get back to you. We'll, we'll have an email sent, but we gotta go.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, bye.
I saw a raised hand from the HPD representative. Did you have comments on, uh, what was being discussed?
Um, only that, um, I think, I think it was, um, Hippawai. The one that you go down Pamoah and you make a left before the old St. Francis, there's that place there. Hippawai Place is the, the street that you're, you're talking about. But the problem with Hippawai, if, I haven't gone there in years, but after a while, it doesn't become Sidney County property, so, yeah. I thi, I believe it's Hippawai Place.
Alright, thank you. And, uh, I do note that the, uh, Honolulu Fire Department representative has gone out apparently on a call, so you know, I'm not sure what's going on there, but hopefully it turns out okay. And I think brings that item to an end. Oh, I'm sorry, I see a hand from Tom Heinrich. Do you have any, um, comments to make before, before we move on, Tom?
Uh, yeah, real quick, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I would suggest that this topic deserves a lot more conversation in the future. Uh, we do, hopefully Dominic Diaz is, uh, with us this evening for Board of Water Supply. Uh, but I also wish to note, uh, that, uh, the, uh, the whole topic of capital improvement projects for our district is always a, uh, good focus for the board. Uh, and so in planning for, uh, the next budget round and that kind of stuff. Uh, but, uh, we can coordinate with Board of Water Supply to get some further information as to what some of the standards are, uh, that kind of stuff. But bottom line is, who pays for it? Is it public or private property? What are the circumstances? That kind of stuff. But Board of Water Supply is beginning to look at, uh, I'll say underserved areas by fire hydrants, especially because everybody is that much more sensitive now, uh, to wildfires. So, uh, Dave, be happy to help coordinate, uh, with Board of Water Supply and others, uh, to help, you know, pull together a future presentation or whatever to the board on those questions. Thanks, Dave.
Alright, thank you, Tom. And do we have any other, uh, comments before we move on? I see and hear none, so we're gonna move to, uh, the next item, which is, uh, 2B, which is Honolulu Police Department. And I see that we have a representative from HPD here, so please go ahead.
Hi, Hello, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura from HPD. Um, these are stats for, um, August as compared to the previous month. Motor vehicle thefts were five as compared to four. Burglaries were four as compared to five. Um, UEMV, you, I'm sorry, thefts in general were 13 as compared to three. And UEMVs, which is theft from autos, uh, that was nine as compared to four. This is out of total calls of service of 6,553 for the district. And further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And our safety tip for the month, um, is, actually, just a reminder that, um, the hurricane season still keeps going, um, even in September, and then we, we missed a bullet last week, um, but, um, flash floods can occur, so, um, always be on the lookout for that. And then the different stages, the flood advisory is the one where they're saying it could occur. Um, but the warning and especially the watch is the one that, um, you really need to look out for. And then if there's low standing water and you're not sure whether you can make it or not, please, please don't go through it and get caught because that can be a very expensive mistake or even a very dangerous one. So even, even, um, flat roads, like there's one in Kahala, Farmers, Farmers Road. It looks flat, but whenever we have just a little bit of rain, it looks like it's only two, three feet, but it's, it's deeper. Um, please don't take that chance. And then, of course, Manoa, well, Manoa has a bad history of streams overflowing, but, um, yeah, if you can, uh, uh, don't chance it. Just turn around and, um, and wait for the waters to recede.
Alright, uh, thank you, Officer. So I see a few raised hands. I'm gonna go into order that I saw them in. So first, uh, I believe it's, uh, Member Mishreki was the first raised his hand, so Member Mishreki, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Lieutenant. Um, I, I just wanted to start off by saying a big thank you to HPD for, uh, responding to a lot of the parking enforcement claims related to the UH semester starting and especially around the surrounding community of Lower Manoa. Um, I, I can see sort of the trail of tickets that are happening, especially down Vancouver Drive, which, which is a great sign that HPD is aware and responding. Um, one thing I'll note is, um, what, one of the, I, I guess, ticketing, uh, circumstances that I see is commonly overlooked with some of the illegal parking that's happening, especially along, uh, my area, which is Vancouver Drive, is, um, there's, there's a gap that occurs in between the white painted designated lines that are Maoka of Vancouver Drive. And sometimes, um, between the two designated parking spaces, there's a gap that's probably no more than about five feet. And what I've seen and witnessed, uh, multiple times along with, with my neighbors is the instances of where, uh, people are parking in between the designated parking spots, which, and they're really wedging very tightly in between those two cars. And I've actually witnessed property damage as a result of the bumper tapping happening between both the front and rear vehicles that are legally parked there. Um, I was just, uh, raising this as a concern, uh, not, not only for myself, but it is, uh, very much a, an issue with, um, my neighboring community within that area as well that, that wanted to be raised. So I'm hoping that as a concern that it'd also be raised, um, as an observation for any ticketing officer, that, that, that be, uh, noticed, um, and observed as, as it is very easy to sort of pass by that vehicle, being that it is wedged in between two legally parked vehicles. Um, but, but that seems to be a common occurrence as well, especially along Vancouver Drive.
Sure, I can forward that on to, um, the, the day watch, but the best thing to do is if, if, if it's a reoccurring problem or a chronic problem and a, especially if it's a chronic vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, just give us a call and speak to the officer and point it out. And that way you'll know for sure, um, it'll be, it was taken care of, yeah.
Thank you so much. Um, I did have also, sorry, one more concern to raise as well, and this is from the neighboring community around Common Elie Park, which is, uh, right by the mid-pack entrance. I, I'm, I'm not sure if whether or not it's already been observed by HPD or there's been calls, but I know that there seems to be, uh, homeless, uh, a homeless individual that's yelling profanities um, throughout the day and as well as the evening time, and it is scaring the children and the families that live in that area. Uh, just wondering if there's any, uh, notice of that within HPD or any calls that have been given regarding that particular individual and whether or not there's been any measure of regulation as a result.
Um, we get calls to home, um, parks, homeless at the park, um, all the time. But, um, if possible, if it's a situation where it's, it's escalated to the point where it's, they're scaring kids or especially if some kind of, any kind of, um, assault or harassment is, is involved, please call and stay, um, and speak with the police and make a report. That way we can address the situation. Um, some of the biggest problems with, um, with, uh, how can I say it? Not generic calls, but, um, anonymous calls for homeless people at the park. You know, um, those are, those are difficult for us to, to, um, address because there's different things we have to do in relation to what possible law they could be breaking or not breaking. But if it's escalated to the point where they're scaring kids, they're harassing people, they're, um, you know, um, doing things like that, which are clearly against the law, um, call 911, report it, you know, um, and speak with the police. Um, we'll, we'll, um, we'll deal with that situation, yeah.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And just for references, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair, yeah.
Sorry, um, Member Mishreki, I'm gonna have to cut you off there just because, uh, we're in long times. I'm gonna ask, uh, Robert Zane as our second vice chair and therefore our timekeeper to please sort and force some time just because, uh, we're 22 minutes in and we're still on item 2B, so.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, and thank you, Lieutenant.
I talk too much.
Alright, sorry to jump in like that. Uh, I'm gonna call on, uh, it's either Member Moylan or, uh, Anson Wu, so whoever it is there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, like probably most people on the board, uh, I'm routinely approached by neighbors who have a traffic safety concern. Um, what is the procedure for proposing traffic calming measures or other modifications to reduce, uh, risk? How do we do that? Does it require a full board resolution? Is there a way to, you know, send a suggestion in and hear back from the police department? What's the appropriate procedure?
I could speak to some of that if that's okay, Chair.
Uh, Member Watson, uh, go ahead and answer the question for him.
Uh, it depends what it is. When there was a concern about people not stopping at the crosswalk on Manoa Road between that and, um, Manoa Elementary School by the little road that cuts through from Manoa Road to the Manoa District Park parking lot, there is two crosswalks there. There's kind of like a little island in the middle on the Noal, on the Manoa Elementary School side. And so what Ann Kobiyashi was able to do for us is put those things that are like by Starbucks crosswalk at Manoa Marketplace, those little pedestrian people that are sticking in the center of the road, right? On the, the white line or whatever it is, to just remind people, and, and it says on there, "Stop for pedestrians." And that has really, really helped along Manoa Road. Uh, if you're coming out from Paradise Park End and heading toward the five-way, that there is a crosswalk there, that there are children and families crossing there, and it's worked wonders, and that was a real simple measure that Ann Kobiyashi was able to do for us right away, so something that is easy.
How? How was it done? What do I do?
Ask your city council person to get it done. That would be, Kevin, say.
We don't do that through this board? We don't do this through this board? We never recommend traffic calming measures?
We had a presentation from a student at Manoa Elementary School that came to our board. A young girl in fourth grade or something that presented to our board and said, "We need to do something. I'm afraid I'm gonna get hit by a car." And then the board agreed that something should be done and Ann Kobiyashi, during her presentation for city council, said, "I think we could just do this and I'll try to get it done," and she did.
Yeah, sorry, we should, we, um, Dave, real quickly, uh, Tom hasn't hand raised, but this should probably be the last comment on this subject considering we're three minutes in already.
Answer.
Bob, am I recognized, Chair?
Yep, you're recognized, Tom.
Okay, thanks. Real quick, uh, this is a classic type of thing that is, uh, uh, the focus of the boards. Uh, you guys can talk about it at any time, uh, and, uh, write a letter or you have, uh, other representatives that are part of this meeting this evening. Uh, the key is communication. Uh, secondly, you don't need to wait for a board meeting. Uh, you can, uh, call or email, uh, any of your elected officials. Give us a call and we'll look into it. Uh, but the key is, uh, whatever specificity that you can provide so that we can then contact the right people, whatever, to look into, uh, what those situations are. So, uh, you got a concern? Uh, don't wait for a meeting necessarily. If we can do some preparation before the meeting, uh, the discussions are even more focused. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, so I will note that earlier I missed, uh, Member Chong, and since she, uh, didn't speak previously, I'm gonna, uh, give Member Chong a minute before we go to Michael Hee. Uh, Member Chong, please go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, um, I have a question on, um, University Avenue. Um, before this year, we had construction right next to the YMCA near, um, university and I can't remember what the, right next to Sinclair Library. And the construction workers were parking their cars there. And now the students think that they can park there before 8:30. It's tollway from 6:30 to 8:30. However, they're starting to park there earlier than that. I guess that's because their classes start earlier. But I'm, I have to, when that happens, I try to call the police, but I'm always put on hold. But I just want the police to realize that they are starting to park too early because the traffic doesn't die down until 8:30, yet they're trying to park before 8 o'clock because they're parked, they're probably, their class starts at 8 o'clock. Is that something that the police can be aware of?
Sure, I can, um, I can pass that, um, that request on to the, to the day watch. Um, you're, you're talking about University Avenue going Mackay-bound right before Metcalf, right? Or, see, you, that area?
They start parking too early, and, um, I know they run out of space on.
Yeah, it is the challenge of UH, if you ever went to UH.
And because of the construction workers always parking there before 8 o'clock, they think they can do that too, which is not right because I know the construction people had a permit to do that, but the students are starting to park there. And because it's the beginning of the school year, I don't want it to get any worse than it is now. But there's always cars parked on University Ave before 8 o'clock.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll let the day watch know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, uh, Member Chong, and we'll go to, uh, Mr. Michael Hee now. Uh, please go ahead.
Alright, thank you. Can you folks hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
You're good. Yep.
Uh, Lieutenant, uh, you know, I was driving down University Avenue the other day and I noticed a, a traffic enforcement car, um, parked there. And I was wondering, what would it take to have that officer or that car patrol further into the valley?
That's a good question. Um, traffic, the traffic enforcement people are, um, they work out of, um, the traffic division. And normally they do, they do, um, traffic, they do like, uh, like the tow zones or, um, the metered parking, mostly metered parking, um. As far as, what do you mean by going more up into, um, Manoa Valley?
Well, you know, um, during a typical, um, school day, um, we have cars parked into the intersection in front of high fire hydrants, um, you know, sort of squeezing in, um, sometimes parking on sidewalks, this sort of thing. I mean, you know, blatantly, and it's, I, it's kind of a waste of your, your officer's time to, to come and tag all these cars and really, And really, you know, with it being a chronic problem, it doesn't do any good because the cars are still there. Um, but if there was consistent enforcement, um, you know, perhaps it would change the behavior.
Um, well, what I would, what I would recommend is is to call now, to call, call it into nine one one. That way it could be broadcast um on, on the radio. Um, the traffic, the traffic guys, the parking guys, they're actually listening in. So if, if um, they're in the area, they can, I can't, I think, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they can handle it. But if not, an officer will go to that. So the, the end result would be hopefully that the situation gets resolved, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe it's kind of a waste of your time because we're not talking about one or two cars. We're talking about all the fire hydrants or, you know, like for example on Kahala Street, these cars are parking right into the intersection on a one-way street.
Well, if it's a fire hydrant, definitely call it in and we'll tow that, we'll tag it and not only tag it, but we'll tow, we'll tow that vehicle. I mean, I hate to pick on students, but every, of course, every year, if you don't do that, especially at the beginning of the year, it becomes a mess for the whole year. So um, yeah, definitely, definitely call it in. Uh, it would be my um, my suggestion.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. He. I apologize. I know it for your chance to remember is Watson and Vice Chair Zane, but we're thirteen minutes in, we're still at the very beginning and we gotta move forward because there's stuff coming up on the agenda that might take some time. So uh, thank you, Lieutenant, for uh the report and we'll see you again next month. Okay, so that brings us to um room numeral three board resolutions. Uh, we have two resolutions coming up. And uh, there is an issue that came up with both resolutions. And some of you are aware of the situation. Uh, I've already spoken to one member of the board about this. I've also spoken to several community members about this. Uh, but per Sunshine Law, I was uh not able to inform most of the board. So for those who haven't been uh on late night phone calls with me for the past forty-eight hours, I'm gonna bring you up to speed on the situation. So um, two days, uh, two nights ago, Monday night, I received a call from a Manoa resident who was now not gonna disclose that respect for their privacy. And this Manoa resident informed me that there are potential ethics violations with the two resolutions that we have listed on the agenda tonight. Uh, this individual brought up four specific violations citing specific uh sections of the neighborhood plan. Uh, two thirteen, one oh two, which uh talks about board actions. This person said that this was a potential violation because both our resolutions don't relate to the neighborhood as a whole. They're too narrow. Uh, this person also uh cited uh section two thirteen, one oh four B, which basically says that we as a board can't show uh individuals' special privileges or consideration. Uh, this individual said that we're violating that rule because both these resolutions would be showing special favoritism and consideration to uh Mr. He and Mr. Suarez for the people who requested the resos. Uh, they also said that, that, that there could be a violation of section two dash fourteen dash one two three, uh, which is relates to duties of officers because um the duties enumerated in that section don't cover the sort of thing that these resos would do. Uh, the person also raised a fourth uh section, which was section two sixteen, uh, two oh seven, which talks about the geographical boundaries. Uh, that's a non-issue because the, the areas in question are within our, our geographical boundary. So, so that one I know for sure isn't a problem. But I, I spoke to this person and they uh believe that if we were to go forward with votes on these resos, then we as a board and or we as individuals could be subject to um as uh an ethics complaint. And this individual communicated to me their belief that if such a complaint happened, that we would be found in violation. So I've consulted with the, both of the ethics commissions. I, I sent in an email to the State Ethics Commission the other day, uh, outlining the situation and the um, the alleged rule violations that were brought up on Monday night. The City Ethics Commission pointed it and told me to talk to the Honolulu Ethics Commission. So I subsequently emailed the Honolulu Ethics Commission. They pointed it to a different email address. So both ethics commissions have pointed the question and I should be able to get an answer by late this week or early next week, but I don't have an answer uh right now. Which brings us to the issue of whether we as a board are going to take up these resolutions and vote on them when there is a potential ethics violation or whether we are going to skip the vote and reconsider this after we've gotten an ethics ruling from either an ethics commission or some other um official body or office. Uh, frankly, my inclination at this time is to skip over and not take the vote because I do not want board members to be in a position where I'm asking them to take a yes vote and they're not sure if a yes vote is an ethical violation or not. Uh, I also, as a, as Chair, don't want to be in a position where I'm asking people to take a vote that may or may not be an ethical violation. And uh likewise, I don't want to pass the gavel to either of our vice chairs, Bosel or Zane, because then they would be in the position of needing to uh call a potentially ethics violating vote. So again, my inclination at this time is to um skip over these items, not, not take a vote on them, wait till I get an ethics ruling or something similar from someone official. And assuming it's all good, which I think it's gonna be good, then reconsider it uh next month and next meeting. So in a moment, I'm gonna open up for discussion uh so that people can weigh in. If I do get uh substantial pushback from members of the board, if, if the rest of the board thinks I'm crazy and thinks we can vote, vote on it, then I'm willing to change my opinion and uh go for the vote. Um, but first, I'm going to uh call on two people. First, Member Watson and then Michael He. Uh, the reason why I'm calling on Member Watson is that the first resolution um relates to trying to get a no parking um, area designated on a particular street. And basically, Mr. He who wanted the petition was told by the Department of Transportation Services that he needed to get a certain petition filled out with at least ninety percent yes votes. And then needed to have us as the neighborhood board send that document uh to DTS on his behalf. Uh, Member Watson talked to DTS about this. And before we go forward and discuss other things, I'm gonna call Member Watson to explain uh for discussion with DTS and what got said there. Member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, well, I was concerned because the, the parking survey, permit survey, or the parking, whatever it's called, parking removal survey that form that DT, Department of Transport, uh, what is it called? Transportation Services for the city and county under the mayor's office, right? Um, is the one that gave them this form and told them, as I understand it, that um if ten of the residents around this area that these residents don't want to allow any public parking on their street. So maybe they paint the curb red or whatever. Maybe it's five residents on one side of the street and five on the other side of the street that wanna ban public parking there altogether. Um, and the Department of Transportation Services gave them this form and said, fill it out and get at least ninety percent of those residents signed. And they got a hundred percent. All ten residents, five probably on each side of the road, signed it. We don't want any public parking here for our friends, for us, for anybody. We don't want it. And um, so then this form says that after they get at least ninety percent of signatures and they got a hundred percent, then you take this survey um through the Manoa Neighborhood Board. And while the support, to get their support for this, what these ten neighbors want, they take it to the board, the board will give it its support if they do. And then the board will submit it to the Department of Transportation Services with the city. So I said, well, that's kind of whacked, you know, that it wa, why are we laundering this, right? For the city and its residents. And I don't wanna be laundering anything, have our board in that position, that we're forced to take a position and funnel it through to, to leverage it on for some residents. So I didn't wanna be, ever have our board in that position. So I called Department of Transportation Services and I spoke to Trisha. And she's gonna talk to the higher-up director or other people. But what, as it is typed in this uh paragraph at the top of their survey that they fill out, it's incorrect. And that isn't what the Department of Transportation Services intended at all. What they intended was if a resident or a group of residents have as a concern, they can try to get, contact the Chair of the Neighborhood Board, get on the agenda and come to a meeting and voice their concerns and see if others are concerned about it or if it's an issue the board wants to take up or the board doesn't wanna take up the issue, but would refer them to a city councilperson or a representative or Tom Heinrich to advise them on what options are available for whatever their concern is. But maybe the board doesn't wanna take any position on it. And we've done that as a board. And the person has presented and then the chair has asked for a motion about the issue and nobody makes a motion. And pow, we're just pow as a board. We step away from it and the person just has to pursue it in some other way. And so it's a twenty-year-old form and Trisha assures me that that paragraph will be edited and there will be a new form. And they didn't mean to put the Manoa Neighborhood Board or any board in the middle to have to then run this up the flagpole for, for people who have a gripe about something or a concern about something. And so they're gonna change the form. And Trisha said she was gonna contact whoever the point person was of these ten residents and tell them that. And they can just submit it on their own and never bring it to our board at all. So that's what she said and she apologized. And she didn't wanna put the board in that position. Uh, so hopefully, I mean, Kim Sparling probably is on this call, but hopefully the city will correct that mis typo thing. And the misleading of the residents who thought they had to sign this thing and bring it to us and we take it from there because we're not in the business of doing that and our board doesn't wanna be in that position. So that's what I know.
Alright, thank you, Member Watson. Before we go on, um, partly I want Member Watson to talk about that, to bring people up to speed because she's the only other uh board member whom I've discussed this with. Um, the other reason is that uh there's a possibility, depending on the, the decision we make, we make tonight, that Michael He, uh, the, the Mr. He who requested this resolution, uh, might not get a resolution. And that she might be stuck trying to get through this uh without our board passing a resolution to support him. So because of that, I wanna ask Anson, as our staffer, to include something in the minutes. And Anson, you, you don't need to memorize this or write down. I'm gonna email this to you afterwards as well. I would like Anson to include in the minutes uh that Member Watson talked to Department of Transportation Services. Uh, I want it to be noted in the minutes that you talked to a DTS staffer. Um, and inform this staffer that Mr. He's parking removal survey is one hundred percent complete.
Trisha, I spoke to Trisha.
And my name is Trisha. Uh, please also note that the staffer has said that she's going to inform her superiors that um the removal survey is a hundred percent complete. And please also note in the minutes that per Ellen Watson's discussion with the DTS staffer, DTS is going to change the wording on the parking removal survey to remove the stipulation requiring the neighborhood board to um send the document to them. And I'm asking that that be put in the resolution because in case we don't get a resolution or, excuse me, I'm asking that be put in the minutes because in case we don't get a resolution tonight, I want um Mr. He to have some documentation that uh this agreement was made. So he has something to, to point to if DTS gives him a hard time. Uh, so uh, last night I did speak with both uh Mr. He with this resolution and Mr. Suarez for the next resolution. And before we open up to others, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. He to give his thoughts on the situation and uh any comment he has. So Mr. He, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate your help on this issue. But what really bothers me about this whole thing and um, you know, you're bound by certain things you can't say, but I'm not bound by the same things. Um, my understanding at, is that the role of neighborhood board is to serve as a gateway to echo the voices of the residents. Echo the voices of the residents or help the residents with resident concerns. I've jumped through the hoops. I've gotten the signatures. And all, all these concerns are started with one resident. I mean, all the concerns. So there's, there's no favoritism here or anything like that. What is the role of the neighborhood board? Is the neighborhood board there to help the community? Or is it there to pick and choose who they're gonna help and, and put their own opinions um, uh, in the place of those community members? That's the problem I have. And, and Ms. Watson's um, you know, comments sounds like you're picking and choosing. And that really bothers me. The purpose is to echo the voice of the community. Or if this resolution is incorrect, help me correct it. Or the person who has a pickleball problem, if his thing isn't correct, help him resolve the problem. Not I don't know who brought forth this ethic complaint. Um, I suspect it's one of the board members and I, I would encourage that board member to speak up, speak up to give clarity. Because my impression is that either the board is, wants to pick and choose which resolutions they wanna pass or they wanna bully you. I, and, and my thought is this is a hazing thing where they're just bullying you. Um, and I appreciate all the work you're doing and you can't say stuff like that, but that's what it appears like, right? So my ask is, what is the purpose of the neighborhood board? I asked the board members, what is the purpose of the neighborhood board? Let's say I brought it to you. You guys voted down. Are you guys substituting your opinion versus the ten people who submitted it? What's the purpose of the neighborhood board? Anybody?
Tom Heinrich could answer that question best. He knows it well.
Okay, so at, at that, at that, um, given that this is a, a pretty controversial and, you know, this is a potentially tense topic, I'm gonna ask that people uh follow order of speaking strictly. So please only speak when you raise your hand and are recognized. And I'm just saying that because, you know, I normally don't like to be mean. I'd like to be pretty liberal in terms of cross-talk, but um, I don't want this to turn into uh two groups of people shouting at each other. So uh, please follow order of speaking. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna turn to Tom Heinrich because we have historically sought his advice on parliamentary and procedural matters. Um, before I do so, I'm going to note that um I'd not enjoy the uh situation of being called uh less than forty-eight hours before the meeting because like, you know, nothing against the person who called me. I'm gonna assume that that was done in good faith over what they thought was a real um problem. But it basically required me to go around um playing phone between several community members and a board member uh for the past two days. And it now puts me in a very awkward position of being to explain someone else's legal argument without being able to say who they are. So for the future, I'm gonna ask that if anyone has a problem with the agenda and thinks we're violating ethics or the rules or the law, to uh please inform me the weekend before the meeting at the latest. Because that way I have enough time to write to the, the appropriate ethics commission and get an answer in writing on whether it's um legit or not. So please, uh, going forward, if anyone has an objection like this about the agenda, bring it up before the clock strikes midnight on Sunday before the meeting. Because that way I have enough time to properly vet the situation. Uh, but Tom Heinrich, uh, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, a couple of directed comments here. Uh, with no uh pun intended or sarcasm intended uh to everyone, welcome to the frontiers of the neighborhood board system. It is the classic grassroots community forum. Uh, and some folks are far better prepared than others. Uh, some have uh great experience. And this may be the first time for others. This is the raw uh step into public democracy. Having said that, the real key here is I'm at a loss and I don't need to know who is suggesting ethical violations or potential violations. Uh, that's irrelevant. Uh, but I, for all of my past experience, including as a former executive secretary for the Neighborhood Commission Office, um, I'm at a loss to understand uh what basis there may be for an ethical violation. The real key here is that the neighborhood boards uh to go directly to the city charter, section fourteen, one oh one only has half a sentence that directly applies, which is the role of the neighborhood boards is kind of the beginning, is to increase and. "is to increase and assure effective citizen participation to the decisions of government or in the decisions of government." Please note, it doesn't say "city." That word was taken out many years ago, so that anything that could potentially be a government decision is fair game for discussion by the Neighborhood Board and by the community in front of the Neighborhood Board. Having said that, first to the issue of possible parking restrictions at a particular location. This is something that comes up before the Board every once in a while, but broader. The Neighborhood Board is called upon by the city and county and even by the state in a number of processes, by ordinance or by statute, to have applicants for various things actually appear before the community or seek to do so prior to those applications being accepted or worked on by various departments. I'll just name three of them: Department of Planning and Permitting, Department of Transportation Services, Department of Parks and Recreation for the city. So there's a number of things that always come before the Neighborhood Boards, and this is where those discussions are had. The other thing here, looking at my notes real quick, another one that has been regularly before the Board over the many years are cell tower placements. Well, that's nothing that we have any authority over, and more broadly stated, the Neighborhood Board has no authority. Thank you for your input. You do a lot of the at-first blush discussions and everything else that a lot of other folks, the departments, the agencies, the elected officials, rely on as part of the process. So to summarize, the Neighborhood Board is not the decision maker. It is the forum. What you're called upon to do for both of the proposed resolutions is to provide input to the process. So what the Board may choose to do or not do following discussion on either of these topics is entirely the Board's choice. But most importantly, the items are on the agenda. It provides that opportunity for public input on every agenda item, and then it's up to the Board as to whether you choose to take a position or not take a position on those proposals. And one last comment, something always well-considered on behalf of the Board by the Chair, unless otherwise delegated, but by the Chair, is that in lieu of a resolution or a formal motion, the Chair is always free to summarize the discussion in a letter and communicate that to the respective agency or whatever. That's part of the communication. So I'm, I'm very confused as to what the supposed basis of an ethical violation is, and the fallback is always, if the discussion occurs and somebody takes offense to that, anybody is always free to file a complaint with the Neighborhood Commission, which is the first line in terms of what the authority over the Neighborhood Boards is, or the Ethics Commission, or beyond that, I'm not sure. Okay, so those are different avenues for later. But it's up to the Board to decide after the public discussion here as to whether to move forward or not, what you choose to do. But from my experience over the years, I absolutely am bewildered as to what a basis for an ethical violation argument is, and I leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So I see somebody's hands. Vice Chair Zane, I'm going to ask you in force time just to make sure we can get through this. I see a raised hand from Anson Wu slash Member Moyland. Wish everyone that is, please go ahead.
It's me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly hoping that based on the concerns you had to deal with, we will not take action on either of these tonight. But that would give us a month to learn a couple of answers to questions. So for example, the text you read about recommending a law that would only affect an incredibly tiny number of people. If I'm looking at my map here where the description says that from Onahuahua Avenue from 2245 to Kahala Street, according to this map, that's one property. And that piece that you read from the Ethics Code does sound like that we would be discouraged from trying to say there should be a law that only applies to one property. I would love to hear the answer to that by the time we finally discuss this. The second one, the pickleball one, is asserting that people are violating an existing noise ordinance. And then that makes me ask, well, why can't we just enforce the noise ordinance? And then we don't need to make a special rule about pickleball. Just say, hey, if those people are violating the noise ordinance, shut them down. So that's a question I would love to have answered by the end of the month. I don't see the, the narrow scope of that one, because it, it seems to me they're recommending a regulation that would apply to the whole city. So I don't, I don't see the problem with that. And then I'm, I'm, on the previous item, if Mr. Heinrich would shoot me an email, I'd love to follow up with him offline on another question. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Moyland. The rationale used by the person who spoke to me Monday night was that the pickleball resolution could be construed as giving special privilege or preference or consideration or whatever to Mr. Suarez on the basis that he's been the only one advocating for it. It's something, a group of people or an organization asking for it. It's just one person is asking for this policy change without additional testifiers or anything. So that, that was the rationale given to me. I'm going to call on Robert Fox now. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Being the itinerant Neighborhood Board representative, I actually went to the location and did my research. What they're asking for is a reasonable accommodation. We would give this to any disabled person, let alone an able person. They are not trying to do something which is outside the law. In fact, the law says they come to the Neighborhood Board, and that's the process. Our job as a Neighborhood Board is to discuss and then find if it's reasonable or not reasonable. It's a very simple thing. P.S. I couldn't verify exactly who this person is who's claiming an unethical violation, but I'll bet you dollars against doughnuts this person is being impacted by this resolution. And I've had that kind of crap happen for the last 45 years that I've been in government. Sometimes you just need to say, you know, let the City Council make the determination. Our job only is to see if it's a reasonable request. They have 10 people who are requesting an accommodation. They all live there. I don't know how many of this Board have spent the time and energy that I did to go down and figure out what the issue is, but they have a real issue here. And our job only is to say, is it reasonable? That's the Board's responsibility. We have no authority.
I'm sorry, Member Fox, I gotta cut you off for time. I'm sorry, but...
That's fine, all right.
We're at an hour in. To what you said about this person potentially having a particular bias on these issues, I don't think that's the case. I, I'm, I'm agreeing with this person. They don't live on the street that pertains to Mr. He's resolution. As far as I'm aware, they don't have any particular opinion on pickleball, and they don't live near the park. So, and given that this person raised the exact same procedural and legalistic objections to both resolutions equally, I think that this person really thinks that there is a legal or ethical problem rather than them having an objection to, to the cause being served here. So that, that's what I can infer from what I know. But I mean, you know, I don't know what people are thinking. Maybe people are thinking something else. That's just my, my best guess based on what's available to me.
What do we do at the end of this discussion?
Respect the order of speaking. Respect the order of speaking.
Will you come back to us?
We, we are an hour in, and we're still in like the first order of the agenda. I'm going to call on Janelle, and I'm going to ask Janelle to please try and comply with the one-minute speaking requirements so that we can get the agenda moved forward. Thanks.
Hi, this is Janelle from Councilmember Sees' office. I just would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. As far as Mr. Suarez's resolution is just for parks, we are told by DPR, they're fairly adamant that any changes to any park policies, community members need to get Neighborhood Board buy-in first, Neighborhood Board support. And, and so we, whenever we have complaints or issues or concerns about parks, we always send our constituents to the Neighborhood Board to get support. So that's, that's just our process, and just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Okay, so Member Fox says, "Voice is opinion that seems to be pretty in favor of having a vote." I'm going to ask, are there any other board members who feel strongly about going forward and having a vote on this tonight? Because if we don't have a lot of board members who are in favor of having the vote, then my inclination, as I said, is to move forward without a vote.
Remember, I got Chair, I see Member Bosel's hand raised, as well as Member Fukamoto's hands raised.
Yes, I see a raised hand from Bosel, Fukamoto, and I also have the comments made by Robert Fox. If there are any other board members, not too many members, but board members, because it's board members who are going to be taking a vote on a potentially unethical or an ethically questionable resolution until we've gotten an assurance from an official body, are there any other board members who feel strongly about having the vote tonight? Other than Fox, Bosel, and Fukamoto?
Hold on, hold on. Chair, I believe Member Bosel wanted to speak. I think she's having her answer, she needs to speak versus what you're asking.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Zane, for breaking the order of speaking, because that was important. Vice Chair Bosel, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say quickly that I think if there are any issues and you're, you know, you're waiting to hear back, I understand that, you know, whoever raised both of these resolutions would like a speedy end to this, but it seems like if we're going to do this, we might as well do it right. And so if this can be tabled until next meeting, that that would be the prudent thing to do if you're waiting to hear back, because unfortunately, these, whoever raises, issued to you, you know, didn't do it until in time for you to have the response from whoever it is deemed is the proper person to respond to you. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay, so then the two board members who are, who have a strong favorability of hearing it tonight are just Fukamoto and Fox then, correct?
Chair? No, no, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Chair, no, no, that's, that's not my position. My position is...
Oh, you, you want to talk? I see. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yes. My, my position is I'd like to speak and just say that the, the parking resolution, I don't believe should be, should be discussed tonight, should, should not be voted on tonight, because we haven't heard a presentation. So I have no idea whether there's another side to this. It, it's just a complete mystery to me since it came into my inbox maybe a week ago. The other one we heard last time, so I think the other one, in my opinion, is ready to go. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. -- excuse me. Thank you, Member Fukamoto, and we'll get to discussion on the second resolution in just a minute. So, Member Fox, because you expressly, you would like, you would want to vote tonight, would you like, because I'm going to move forward without a vote. So, Member Fox, would you like the minutes to reflect that you object to my moving forward without a vote?
I do objective. I think it's my opinion.
Thank you. And just making sure, if anyone else wants it in, in the minutes of the objection to my decision, please shout it out. Just, just shout it. Board members, go ahead and shout it. Okay, seeing, hearing, no others. Anson, I'm going to ask that the minutes reflect that Chair has decided to not hold a vote on this item pending an ethics ruling. I would also like you to please note that Member Fox has objected to that decision. Please let the minutes reflect that. I also want to take a minute to... Yes, Member...
Can I put, can I ask for our motion to have these items specifically tabled to be discussed at the next meeting? So that way we make sure that these items are put on the agenda for the next meeting if we're going to postpone them.
So move.
All right. In that case, I'm going to withdraw my decision to move forward without votes, since we're instead doing that motion. Thank you. So we have it from Member Moyland. I'm Robert Zane. Do you second it?
You're doing a disservice to the community.
Yeah.
Respect the order of speaking. Robert Zane, do you second Member Moyland's motion?
Yes. I mean, I don't care which way we do it. I just want to make sure this is on the agenda for the next meeting at least.
Okay. And I was going to put, put it on the agenda regardless, but if you, if you want to put it officially, then that's acceptable. Do we have any board members who object to tabling this and putting it on the agenda for next meeting? All right, seeing and hearing no objections, the motion to put this on the agenda for your next meeting passes unanimously. That's what we are going to go forward with. And again, because we ended up doing a vote, my, the whole thing I said about putting my decision to withdraw it and Fox's objection, you can just disregard that, because we did end up having a vote on it. So next we're going to move to the, the other resolution that had the exact same ethics complaints brought against it. So for this one, I did talk to Mr. Suarez, Ed Suarez, who is here with us tonight. And we decided that instead of doing a resolution, we're going to use this time, if it's okay with anyone, to do a presentation on the issue, which will hopefully only go for five or 10 minutes. I'll ask Vice Chair Zane to be our timekeeper in that regard. So, Mr. Suarez, I'm going to screen share the PowerPoint you sent me. And I'll do my best to follow along with your presentation. If I ever am not following along, just let me know, and I'll go to the next page. Does that sound good? All right, see thumbs up. All right, one moment as I share my screen. Can y'all see it? All right, I will at this time ask Ed Suarez to unmute and begin the presentation. Again, I'll try to follow along as best I can with the slides.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss this more fully. I'm not put off at all by the situation. I think it's good to share more information and for you guys to get more informed before taking a vote on the resolution. And just to follow up on some questions that were raised tonight, the enforcement is, there are so many loopholes, and that's why I was bounced from DOH to HPD to the City Council to DPR. And, and there was no one willing or able to do enforcement of this issue, even though it's a clear violation of the state and county noise ordinances. So that was frustrating. So, but thank you, Anson, for asking that question, because that, that is the million-dollar question, and hopefully it'll get answered by the end of this presentation. As far as like, I'm being the only one complaining, I know for a fact that that's not true. It's been on the agenda here before, before I brought it up. And also, a regional director of DPR told me themselves that there are many, many complaints, not just in Monoa. And maybe Janelle can speak to that. It'd be nice to know how many complaints there are and where they're coming from. But there hasn't been any transparency about that. And I think I saw a comment about urgency, and, you know, maybe also by the end of this presentation, you'll have a better sense of maybe there is some urgency in terms of this being a public health issue. So, starting off, pickleball, sounds like such a cute and harmless name, but you'll see from a lot of these facts that it's, it's far from that, and it's harmful and dangerous to our health. Just looking at these pickleball sound characteristics, this is a very impulsive and loud at 80 to 120 decibels. That's somewhere between a freight train and a rock concert. Also, another key facet of this sound is that it's in the mid-range frequency, which is very attention-getting for the human ear. It's the most sensitive range of human hearing, and that's why sirens and babies crying and car alarms operate in that frequency. They get our attention, and they trigger a fight or flight response. So there's really no ignoring this, especially when you live only 100 or 200 feet from the source of this noise, as do at least a dozen homes surrounding Monoa Valley District Park. Just, yeah, sticking on, on the end there, just two important things to keep in mind. Um, just, yeah, sticking on, on the end there, just two important things to keep in mind as I go through some of the math here. Um, loudness dissipates six decibels for every one hundred feet away from the source. And each ten decibels means that's twice as noisy as the previous level. So twenty decibels more is four times louder and a thousand times more intense, based on pickleball, uh, sorry, sound engineering science. So, okay, next slide, Dave. Thanks. Um, so it might be helpful just to, like, look at the context of, like, what are our rights here in terms of pollution? This comes from our constitution. You can read that. We've also got in H A R, the administrative rules, a limit of fifty-five decibels at our property lines. Um, pickleball play produces seventy-two decibels, um, at two hundred feet from Manoa Valley District Park courts. That's two to four times the legal limit based on H A R. Um, even ROH, the, the city's own rules aren't being followed in terms of, we know pickleball source is eighty decibels minimum, and that, needs to be permitted if anything lasting more than five minutes cumulatively occurs in the park. And there's no permitting that's being done for pickleball. Just, it's a free-for-all. They're playing on all the courts. Um, there could be sixty-four people playing at once, and Parks and Recreation has no say over it apparently. So we need to help them, and they've asked for that help. And that's why we're gonna get to maybe what can be done there in the next sections. Uh, let me see if there's anything else I need to say about this. Okay, that's fine. We can, we can move on. So, you know, as with any pollution, there's gonna be a myriad of, of health and even financial burdens associated with it. And you can read about those here, and they're well documented, WHO, CDC, you know, everyone states that, and, and they set a limit, actually even lower, with the WHO of fifty-three decibels. So, uh, we can go to the next slide and look, and start looking at, um, some of the things that have been done around the country. And over a hundred other towns like ours have already banned or restricted pickleball, where it's, um, even up to seven hundred and fifty feet from neighboring homes. Um, but even some of the most minimal bans start at two hundred and fifty feet, which still would include Manoa Valley District Park, um, being, because it's only a hundred to two hundred feet away from the nearest homes. So, um, you can look at some of those things, uh, that have been passed around the country very, you know, recently, over the last couple of years.
Chair, we're at the six-minute point, so if you would like to, would you like to give him more time on this?
Great, I thought I had five to ten minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, uh, go ahead. Up to ten minutes, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Right, I think we're on track. Um, so looking at the general recommendations that have been kind of distilled from a lot of these lawsuits and, and, uh, city council actions, um, you can see them for yourselves right there. Uh, the general recommendation is six hundred to eight hundred feet from homes. Um, even a pickleball website, uh, states it should be five hundred feet away from, from homes. Um, and, you know, I, I read a really good response from, from a Parks and Recreation representative from Vir- Virginia, who really seemed to get it, that our objective as Parks and Recreation should be to be good neighbors and to add to and not, sorry, intrude upon the quality of life of our residents. I think that's something to really consider here. Um, next slide, and we'll get into like some more specific recommendations that, based on my distillation of all these facts and information, I've been studying for two years, um, is that it would be reasonable to ban pickleball courts from within three hundred and fifty feet of private residences in Honolulu, um, and restrict pickleball courts within five hundred feet of private residences, unless a professional sound study can actually be conducted by a qualified sound engineer and determine that the sound could be mitigated through reasonable, uh, methods. Uh, of course, given the topography of Manoa, we know from other jurisdictions that elevated homes makes that very, very difficult when the homes are elevated around the courts, uh, and nearly impossible. Um, and then, this is also, whoop, sorry, uh, important in terms of the recommendations that, you know, after working with DPR for the past two years and seeing no, um, actions or results or transparency, um, I would hope that part of this, uh, this resolution eventually could mandate that they do something immediately while they're working on, you know, getting the permanent signage installed, removing the pickleball courts, educating the, the community. There's, there's not a single sign-up, letting the community know, despite my numerous attempts to inform DPR, that this is a public health issue, that they are disturbing the neighbors on a regular basis every day for ten to fifteen hours a day, um, that they actually place a moratorium on pickleball play while they're going about, um, enforcing or implementing any of the recommendations that come out of this group. That's all I have. There's also a video, if there's any time, there's like a three-minute video from Denver that goes over these issues. But if there's no time, you guys can maybe watch it on your own.
Thank you, Ed. And, um, as far as did send me that, um, the three-minute YouTube video. So, uh, after this meeting, I'm gonna email that video to Anson and ask him to disperse it among the board members so that people can see the three-minute, uh, pickleball video. So at this time, noting we're thirteen minutes away from the halfway point of the meeting, I'm gonna ask if, uh, anyone wants to make a motion to likewise, uh, defer the, resolution vote? So move from, uh, member Moylan. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second table till next month.
Second from VC Bosel. I'm just gonna ask, are there any objections to tabling the pickleball resolution till next month? Uh, I see a raised hand from Ellen Watson. Is that an objection?
No, I don't have an objection. I had a question for the presenter.
Um, let, let's table the resolution, then we'll come back to the presentation, since, since we, we already started the, the vote on the, uh, tabling. Let's just do the tabling vote, and then we'll ask questions to the presenter, okay? Sorry. Um, I, I see raised hand from member Fukamoto. Is that an objection?
Should be a no vote.
Member Fukamoto, I see.
Sorry, sorry, I was, I was muted. Um, could we have discussion why, um, this vote is being, uh, why this resolution is being tabled? Just what is the justification?
Uh, justification is same reason as last one. The, the exact same ethics complaints that, um, were raised regarding the last resolution were raised in regards to this one. So for the same reasons, I would like to have it tabled, uh, pending an ethics ruling from an ethics commi- commission or some other, um, official office that can, um, make sure we're in the clear and put that in writing.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. So do we have any objections to passing the tabling vote? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we have tabled the resolution, and I apologize, I'm member Watson, please go ahead and ask questions to the presenter. So, member Watson, I, I call on you, you can, uh, you can go ahead and ask questions.
Thank you so much, and thank you for presenting to our board. Um, and I just had just a couple of questions, because I'm not familiar at all with pickleball at all. And so, my questions were, has anyone used an instrument, a decimeter, and measured the sound from your residence or the sound that is emitted during the pickleball at Manoa Park from next to the pickleball court? So that you actually have scientific measurements of the decibel level and the duration of time for what you're experiencing, okay? That's one. And, and that could be in a table chart on X date, it was measured from this time to this time, and here's this, and here's our average, and stuff like that. And then, at the Manoa District Park, where do they play pickleball? I know where the tennis courts are and the basketball courts. They're playing pickleball in there somewhere?
Anywhere. There, there's no rules.
But don't you have to have a net and?
Yeah, they bring their own nets.
Side and like ping pong ball guy?
They bring their own equipment, their own nets. And they can play on the tennis courts, on the tennis nets.
On the tennis courts?
Yeah, they take over some, some or most of the tennis courts on a regular basis.
I see. And the tennis players are just working around from, around the pickleball people, or they share well, or what? Because there used to be a lot of tennis players in the after-school hours.
That's true, yeah. They are sharing. I don't know how well that's going. Um, normally tennis courts are, are fully in use every night. Um, yeah, but now they have to share with pickleball players.
Okay. And then when are these people playing this pickleball that's really loud? What, in the morning, at night, after work, after?
All, all day long, the park is open from five AM to ten PM, and there are no rules around what time it can be played. So it can be played from five AM to ten PM technically. Um, they play.
Have you had experiences with five AM?
Um, we've gone over the time, but Dave, will you let her continue asking the questions? Okay, sorry, Ellen, go ahead.
What?
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
Sorry, I, I somehow lost my mute button. Um, yes, member Watson can, can go ahead and keep asking questions.
Um, I just wondered, have you experienced five AM pickleball at Manoa District Park?
Uh, no, it starts around seven AM. There's maybe six AM, actually. There's one person that comes out and hits pickleballs against the concrete wall and practices endlessly. It involves.
So in the morning and, and.
And it goes all the way till ten at night sometimes.
Soccer players kick against the wall by the tennis courts, up and down the hill, practicing their soccer moves too. Um, and that's okay, because they're just a young soccer player, and they at the park, and so we're kind of okay with that.
And it's not seventy-two decibels, like.
But I don't know how you residents are okay that border of the park with the soccer players and.
Yeah, I, I, Ellen, can I answer your questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so there was a measurement, and it's seventy-two decibels at our property lines. And that speaks for itself, given what the rules are around maximum allowable noise. That's, that's seventeen decibels higher than what's allowed. That's nearly two, um, almost three times louder than the legal limit. Um, and it is played all the way till ten PM. And we've never had that kind of problem with sound from any of the existing sports like tennis or volleyball. These are, these are things that only reach forty-five decibels at our property line. The ambient noise level in our neighborhood is forty-five decibels, so that doesn't create a problem. That just blends into the, into the background noise. When, when you add, when you bring seventy-two decibels of mid-range frequency sirens, you know, level piercing noise, uh, at that loudness, that's a whole different ballgame. And, and that's happening as close as the nearest tennis court, which is a hundred feet from the closest home. So I hope that helps clarify, like, kind of, like, how much this is happening and, and how loud it is and how it's been, you know, verified.
Chair, may I ask one follow-up question?
I'm, I'm gonna call on Tom Ramsey, and then I'll call member Watson again. Uh, Tom Ramsey, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to know, uh, on a resolution like this one, which specifies distances, like two hundred and fifty feet or three hundred and fifty feet to, to the playing of the game, it would probably be good public relations to, uh, identify all the Manoa board members who are within that distance to existing pickleball playing. So it's obvious to the complainant that this is not, uh, probably not, uh, uh, an ethics issue, because none of the, no, board members actually are within the forbidden distance that's being proposed. So just, just, just a point of, you know, if, if you put that out front early, then it, it's not really a problem if a board member is within that distance, but if you make it public, it takes the sting out of the complaint.
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Ramsey. I'll, and I'll go back to, um, Ellen Watson now, and we'll give you another, since, since you seem to be the only one who's asking, um, substantive questions of, uh, Mr. Suarez. We'll let you go on for another three or four minutes back and forth with him, and then we'll see if anyone else has questions. Thanks.
Um, my other question was, what is the legal decibel limit? Because you said the seventy-two decibel, decibels is seventeen decibels higher than the legal limit. Can you tell me what the legal limit is at the Parks and Rec or Department of Health or for the state of Hawaii or city or what?
Yeah, H A R, the state law sets that at fifty-five decibels at the property line.
And is that intermittent or continuous?
For.
Eight hours or something?
Percent of any twenty-minute time period.
Ten? Say again?
Ten percent of any twenty-minute time period, so two minutes out of any twenty-minute time period. And so compared to what's actually happening, um, this is like thirty times more, like longer duration on a daily basis. This is happening for several hours a day.
Right.
There was.
I, I don't know anything about pickleball, so like tennis has sets, right? And then it's quite a quiet, and then they play a set. I, I don't know anything about pickleball.
Pickleball, pickleball is a much smaller, is a much smaller duration. There's a sm- smaller distance. They're only fourteen feet apart, and there's often four players playing at once. And it's a very fast-paced game, so there's like six hundred volleys, you know, in, in, uh, like an hour. You know, twenty to thirty volleys per minute on average. So, you know, we're, you multiply six hundred, you know, if, if it's just one second each, that's six hundred seconds, that's five minutes, you know, right there. Um, so, over the course of a day, that really adds up. There's one jurisdiction that tried to handle that by, by saying, um, that one hour of continuous play would violate a similar noise ordinance. This is in St. Louis, Missouri. So that kind of gives you an idea of, of like the scope, like how another jurisdiction handled it, if, if you're going by a, a time limit. This one hour of this is, is, is the maximum amount that neighboring residents within two hundred and fifty feet should be exposed to.
Okay.
All right, sorry, sorry, um, sorry, member Watson, at this point.
One, but last one, last one, please.
Okay, last one, thanks.
Any place in Honolulu or community that has addressed this and has been fi- have found resolve to this at their parks or anything? Because you keep talking about what Missouri did in other states mainland. How about other places on Oahu? And then I have no more questions.
I don't have an answer for that. I, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that's, that's been done, positive or negative, really, in terms of addressing this issue. Maybe the city and county representatives could address that question.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna end discussion on this at eight forty. I have, I see three speakers, so I'm gonna call these last three speakers. Um, Vice Chair Zane, please give some leeway, but enforce, uh, time at like two or three minutes or something. It's of your discretion. But I'm gonna go, member Bosel, the member Fox, and Tom Benedict. So, uh, Vice Chair Bosel, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, why don't you share your presentation? That was very helpful, but that was a lot of information to digest. You can send it to all the board members or to Anson, he can forward it to the rest of us. That we can use it in detail, and members can watch some videos on pickleball or whatever so that they can get more familiar with this, since we are tabling the vote anyways. So all members of the community who feel strongly about this, or, you know, the discussion next month, or board members who feel completely unfamiliar with what this game is, can become familiar on their own time. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, member, uh, Bosel. And we're now going to member Fox. Please go ahead.
I'm very familiar with this issue. A very dear friend of mine is a professional pickleball player. And it's a great sport. However, I'm also on the Noise Ordinance Committee in the city of Long Beach. Uh, I moved from Long Beach about a year and a half ago permanently here to Honolulu. But the Noise Ordinance of Long Beach uh recognizes the harm to health of high decimal noise, not only for outside events with application, but because of sports. Uh, there is a direct correlation between high decimal noise and people's health. Uh, if you cannot escape uh that kind of decimal range, um, if you're elderly, uh, if you do not have double pane windows, if they don't have insulation, whatever, which we rarely have in Honolulu, the effect can be extraordinarily damaging. This is new. Uh, we haven't really talked about it in the world a great deal. But noise is a pollution as as severe as any other kind of pollution. And I really uh admire the effort to restrain this kind of pollution on our beautiful island here. Uh, I'll look forward to uh hearing what the rest of the board thinks about this next month. Thank you.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Member Fox. And last, we'll go to Tom Benedict and he'll be our last commenter or question asker for this item. So, Tom, please go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Suarez, I have a question for you. If I under, I looked at your resolution and if I understand it correctly, it would essentially ban pickleball from Manoa Recreation or Manoa Valley Park. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way to to mitigate it, to make it within any of the reasonable noise regulations.
All right.
And can I just add that when people have tried that, they've gone through a great expense to install expensive sound mitigation things. Um, they've moved courts, you know, they've, they've wasted a lot of money because like in Vista, California, just last month, they went through this process for over a year and spent $100,000 and it was still an issue. And we have a very similar topography with elevator homes and and, you know, rolling um fields. So it's gonna be a similar thing and I I hope we can avoid, you know, taking those kinds of half measures and and actually address this issue because it's been going on for two years. And like Mr. Fox pointed out, this is, this is really damaging our our families and our quality of life and our health.
Well, I mean, if I could just respond, Mr. Suar Suarez. Um, while I'm very sympathetic extremely, uh, since I can't stand the leaf lowers in my neighborhood, my part of the neighborhood.
Next issue, yeah.
Um, I'm also, I'm also aware and friends with a lot of people in the community who play pickleball, who are elderly, who get their exercise from that. So it isn't necessarily as clear cut to me as it probably seems to you because I understand that there are other people who have different issues in their mind. But I, again, I'm sympathetic. I just, I just want to make sure that we're all very much aware of what your resolution is asking for, which is to basically ban pickleball in Manoa, as I understand.
No, no, let me clarify. It's to, it's to assure that pickleball is not played within 350 feet. Outdoor pickleball is not played. I mean, we can clarify that in the resolution. So thanks for pointing that out. They could play indoors. They could play at another location in Manoa Park, possibly. Um, maybe in the center of the park um with sound mitigation. I don't know. And, you know, maybe the resolution would be better worded in terms of DPR must abide by the the DOH um sound maximum of 55 decibels. And then they have to figure out what the distance is. I've done the math for them already, but you know, I know for Manoa Valley District Park, it would have to be 428 feet at a minimum from the pickleball courts to to the nearest home. So if they can, if they can somehow magically achieve that, but outdoors, but certainly indoors, it's much more doable, then great. So I'm sympathetic to the pickleball players. I think it's great that they have that sport. But it shouldn't be at the expense of the neighbors.
Fair enough. I mean, I just want to be clear that we're balancing interests here and I get your point. Um, in terms of what you suggested, though, it seems like the only other place in the in the park where that could happen would possibly be where the basketball courts are and the gardens, which are awfully close to other residences. So maybe that's not even possible. So just to be clear, I think what you're asking us, you're asking the board to do is to basically ban pickleball in the neighborhood, which
outdoor pickleball.
As long as we're clear. Okay.
Outdoor pickleball, to be fully clear, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, thank you, uh, Tom. So with that, we are done with this um agenda item. Uh, before we move on, I I just want to say a few quick words on a situation uh with the two resos we just considered. Um, um, Member Watson, are you online? Sorry, I I see your screen, which is not pictured. I'll I'll wait for her because I do want her to hear this as well. There you are. All right. So now that we finished that whole issue, those two resos, uh, first, I want to thank uh, Vice Chair Zane because uh he did help me out over there when I was getting a bit um jumbled with some people who were talking and I do appreciate that because this was a rougher than average meeting, I think. And I also do appreciate what um Member Watson did with Mr. Hee by helping him to talk to a DTS that he's able to at least get something uh without having a um a resolution to his name right now. Um, I also do want to apologize to both Mr. Hee and uh Mr. Suarez. And I am very grateful to them that they were accommodating when I talked to them last night and explained the situation and that they uh understood that there were reasons why we weren't going to be able to have a vote on their resos. Um, but again, as I um said earlier, I mentioned this earlier, but I want to say it again for emphasis that um I don't want us to be in a situation again. Uh, this was not good for the two people who had resos because they thought they were gonna have a vote. They were looking forward to it for about a month and then it didn't happen. Uh, I also personally did not enjoy it because um I had to again make 11:00 PM phone calls and emails to people to try and get everyone on the same page and explain the situation. So again, going forward, if people have objections to the um agenda, send them to me the weekend before the meeting, before the clock strikes midnight on Sunday. If you do that, I will take whatever your law or ethics or rules objections are and I will send them to the appropriate Ethics Commission or other agency to get an opinion and I'll defer to whatever that advisory opinion is. If anyone detects problems with agendas after Sunday, if they contact me on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday um up to the meeting, the Wednesday of the meeting or the Monday or Tuesday before the meeting, I'm gonna tell them that I'm not touching the agenda. And if they want to have something taken off, then I'm gonna ask them to present themselves at the public meeting to explain what their reasoning is so that I don't need to um stand in as their proxy and explain the reasoning to everyone. So again, that's what we're gonna do. If you want me to keep your name off of it and go through an official channel to make sure it's all good, send it to me the weekend before the meeting. Okay. And thank you, everyone, for um bearing with us through all of that. So we're, you're halfway through our time and we're getting back onto our um regular agenda. So next we have um Roman numeral four A, uh, City Monthly Reports, Board of Water Supply. Dominic Diaz is Dominic or someone um representing in here. I'm not seeing anyone for Board of Water Supply. Okay, moving on to Roman numeral four B, uh, Amir Rick Blangiotti, Representative Kim Sparlin, is Kim available? Uh, before before that, Robert Zane, I see a hand raised. Please go ahead.
No, no, I'm waiting for Kim. I just wanna make, I wanna just make sure I have my things like when I, when Kim, when the mayor's representative comes on, please go continue on.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Kim, is Kim available? Going once. Oh, I I I see Kim. There she is. Uh, Kim, please go ahead with your report.
You would think I'd figure out how to get off mute by now. Thought I had the shortcut. Sorry about that. Not awkward at all. And uh, Member Zane, you're up first when I'm done here. Um, before I get to my official report, I just wanna acknowledge the discussion um that has been going on regarding the parking issue, uh, the parks. Chair, I appreciate your thoughtfulness. Um, that you're not putting your members in a situation that it could incur some kind of ethical violation and your commitment to do this right. So I I just want to acknowledge that. And Member Watson, um, thank you so much for, you know, doing what you did to research and sort this all out on behalf of the community. That's what the neighborhood boards are about, is trying to help each other through this, these sometimes complicated and what seems to be convoluted processes. And Mr. Hee and everyone else, I'm really sorry for the frustration through this process. I have noted all of this. I have some notes. I will be following up with both DTS to make sure um whatever changes have been committed to, Member Watson, um really are done and that there is better uh clarity in what the process is. I will follow up with DPR um to to see if there are other solutions at at other parks um regarding this issue. And uh, Mr. Suarez, thank you so much for your, your uh research and your presentation on that and the the note about sound barriers. Um, that was kind of where my brain went of like, hey, maybe there's something there. Um, I, you know, this is democracy. Uh, I know it's frustrating. Uh, but I'm confident that through uh this discourse and and getting it right, the resolution will continue through it responsibly, ethically, and in accordance with all applicable laws and ordinances, including the public comment period when a vote is held. So um, yeah, just, just, it's, it's hard. We're, we're doing the best that we can. I would like to share some good news, though. Um, I do have some follow up on streams. I know that came up a little bit earlier. So with respect to the Woodlawn Bridge, um specifically in that area, uh, it is, um, as I had mentioned before, awaiting the mobile crane equipment uh repairs, which are in, which have been completed and they're testing the equipment right now before releasing it back into operation into the city. Um, they expect that to be fully mobilized by the end of September this year. Uh, so in, within this month, and Woodlawn Bridge is at the top of the list. Um, unfortunately, they have to go in and fix some repairs that are some impacts that um occurred due to a deal in our project. Then when Dealan R was taking care of their land upstream, um, that has had kind of downstream impacts and that that work was done in 2021, 2022 timeframe. So it is on the list. They're getting to it. I promise I shepherd, I I call every month and say, what's going on? Um, but I'm, I'm happy to share that good news there. For the stream area uh from Koali Road to Old Waialai Road, that was last cleared in September. And so since it's on an annual scheduling, the staff is currently doing the scoping of the area for the maintenance work within the next couple of months. So you'll see some movement in that area. And then just an FYI, in early 2025, Department of Facility Maintenance is looking to dredge the Manoa Palolo Stream area from Koali Road to Kaimuki School. And they'll be in there with some heavy equipment. So again, getting them on the, on the cycles of getting things cleaned out there. Um, I did put into uh the chat right at the beginning of this meeting, the uh Mayor's Newsletter, a couple of highlights from that. Um, you guys have heard about, you know, crime along the Waialai Coast. And so there's some highlights in there about what the the city is doing in that. Um, new security cameras in Chinatown uh have been installed and DIT is working on making sure that um HPD has the information that they need. Um, obviously, August brought the wildfire anniversary, so there were vigils on that. And then a little bit outside of this community, but maybe still a little bit um of interest is that there was a hoarder house on Pentacola Street that has since been condemned and taken over by the city and is being cleaned out. Um, we're also proud to say that Honolulu was named the most desirable city to live in the United States in spite of all of those, some of those awful things and and some of the battles that we have here too. So again, I've, I've heard your, your concerns and your issues. I will follow up with Department of Transportation Services, Department of Parks and Recreation, see what we can do to get more clarity, and I welcome your questions.
All right, uh, I see a hand from Robert Zane. So uh, Vice Chair Zane, please go ahead.
Thank you. So, Kim, I've received a couple of um calls from members of the community about the fact that apparently Manoa Park's lights are shutting off earlier as a malfunction going on, apparently, where the lights are not, are not staying on at nighttime. Um, do you have any news about that or any updates of when um that's gonna be fixed as soon as possible?
I was not aware of that. I will look into that. Would it be best to uh get information as soon as I have it back to you so you can get back to those residents specifically as well as um to the chair or to Ants and to get it out to everyone else?
Appreciate it. And I was hoping to also bring this up with the HPD as well because we've had reports of um violent um or belligerent homeless people, I should say, sometimes being in that park with the lights out as they are, it could be an issue for them. Um, especially for like the teams that are practicing uh right now also. So if uh we can get that, take a look at at the city and county, at the Parks and Rec and expedite that, that'd be great.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things. One is I'll, I'll let them know of the homeless to begin with in the park, right? And again, reinforce the parks, um, as they say that they're doing their rounds. But also give HPD awareness so that they can make sure that, you know, when the lights go off, everybody's safe. Do you know about what time they're going off?
They're definitely not staying on. There's, I think it's supposed to stay on until 10 o'clock. Uh, but they're definitely not staying on through that time.
Okay, I'll start going with Parks and see what's going on so we can let.
Yeah, they think that, I think the lights aren't even turning on from what I understand at the park, so they're supposed to switch on at night.
Okay, I'll work with Parks first so we can let HPD know to come and do um patrol. Okay.
Um, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna call on Ellen Watson. I'm gonna ask you to try to adhere to the timeline just because we have an hour and 12 minutes left for everything else in the agenda. But uh, Member Watson, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Kim. Um, and anything you can do to help clarify that DPS forum, that'd be great.
You got it.
Um, I have, there's another problem at Manoa District Park. And I was gonna ask the police officer, but he was done and I couldn't get my question in. So I'll ask you, and maybe you have an idea of what best to do. Um, up by the parking lot off Manoa Road in front of the tennis courts side.
Uh huh.
At uh, sometimes I go there with my dog, right, and walk around and I park there. And there's, oh, maybe every couple of weeks I see him. Uh, there is used condoms in the parking lot, like people threw them out their window. And there's little drug bags, like little, I think they're drug bags. At least that's what the police said before. Maybe you can buy them at a craft store. They're like little tiny Ziploc bags and those around. And then we've recently at the Koala, Koala Loa Parking Lot in front of the baseball, where you can park in front of the baseball uh diamonds, especially by the handicap parking lot is used condoms. So what I do, I don't want to leave them there for the kids. I don't want to leave them there for a dog to get into. I don't want them there so my four-year-old granddaughter can say, what's that? Right? So I put, take some nitrile gloves with me and dog pick up poop bags and I pick them up. And I tie them up in a bag and I throw them in the trash can and take my nitrile glove off uh inside out because we are all good keepers of our beloved park. So we pick up trash and stuff, but this is really gross trash, gooey, go gross trash. What can be done about it? That's my question.
I'll talk with Parks and HPD. I'll talk with parks and HPD.
All right, thank you, well, member Watson, I'm gonna call on the member Kuanu now. Member Kuanu, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Kim, uh, I saw on news about the, um, there's like a core service bus that was like a retrofitted bus that go around for homeless, helping homeless individuals. Can you s- share a little bit about that, like when it's gonna start? Is there a route or how do people, um, request to have that to help, you know, homelessness in a certain area?
Sure. Um, first and foremost, I am going to put into the chat how to engage with Core in general. And through that process, you can say, you know, there's this many individuals that are there, so you might see, you know, a, a, a group, right? Sometimes you have one, sometimes you have a group for safety, right? So you can say there's this many people there, um, Core will have to decide what available resources they are and if, if they have, uh, if it makes sense to bring like the whole bus. But being able to give a little bit more of that detail, like there's eight people, um, that bus is designed to take those that are willing. Say that, you know, those that are willing, um, then to acute care. And so these are, uh, facilities that are being stood up a little here, a little there, a little here, a little there. So it's not in any one neighborhood at any given time, but a little here and a little bit there to deal with the, um, acute health problems, whether that's mental health or physical health, it maybe doesn't need to go to an emergency room. So we're keeping people out of the emergency room as well, um, and give them some of that wraparound service and to help encourage them to the next level of treatment, right? And not to just heal the wound and then put him back on the street. And that's really what this system, um, that, that our DCS, um, our, uh, homeless coordinator, our EMS, who is the department that, that houses and runs Core, this Core C O R E. Um, that they're able to, uh, provide those services. So the, the number one thing is to call Core and say, hey, we noticed this homeless person, it looks like they need some help. You know, can you go and, and outreach? The person may not wanna get on the bus, um, but the idea of the bus was to then be able to take more than one person or more than two people that we've been able to take it at the time when we just had the su- the ambulance size. This way we can take four or five people at a time, and there's people in there helping them, um, you know, address whatever medical issues at the time, there's a little bit of, there's a couch, it's just, it's, it's really this, um, innovative solution. Um, so it is, it is running. Our deputy of EMS is actually licensed to drive the bus, which I find fascinating. Um, but I will put into the chat how you can, how you can, uh, reach out to Core and say, hey, here's the issues, here's, here's what you need to let them know so that they can deploy the right resources. So thank you for that question, we're really proud of that program.
Great, thank you, Kim, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim and member Kuanu. Um, so because we're running low on time from the time sync earlier, and because I've been advised to move to item seven A post haste, I'm going to call on member Bosil to please ask a quick question or give a quick comment. And then we're going to move to seven A, thanks.
Thank you, Chair, just really quick, Kim, um, I think member Zane brought up, or second vice chair Zane brought up the, um, lights in the park, I would only say when you tell them, make sure they remember to turn them off, because for a long time, I was on it two, three in the morning, like, and those are, you know, really bright lights. And they were on for a really long time, wasting a lot of energy and also very disruptive to, you know, other types of animals and things like that. Not to mention people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, I'm moving, I'm, uh, going to take the agenda out of order and move to item, uh, seven A. We're gonna hear from the person who, uh, came here to present that first. And then after that, we're, we are, I think, gonna have a guest appearance from one of our former electeds. So, uh, first, do we have the presenter for, uh, item seven A, the, uh, 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 master plan or UH plan? I believe, I believe it was something Ross was the name?
Yeah, here I am.
Oh, okay, uh, thank you, Ross Richards, please go ahead with your presentation, then we'll go to our, uh, guest, a couple of mahalay, thanks.
So I'll share my screen. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. But I can't see your screen, it's not shared.
Caught me by surprise, how do I do this? Cancel, share. You know I can share.
You have my email address, right, Andy?
All right, I got it, I got it, I think I got it. Can you see that?
No, oh, there we go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, hi, I'm Ross Richards, I'm with the Office of Project Delivery. Um, what I wanted to do tonight was present some current construction projects as well as projects that are about to start. Now, to try and keep it really short, um, starting with the active construction projects. I'll go over these project by project, but these are a list of a few projects that, um, I guess I was asked, when you drive around campus, you know, identi- you can see a few projects going on, so Whitney asked me to present some of these projects, so. The first one is a Sinclair Library renovation, so if you're driving on University Avenue, you see a really black dust screen. Um, what we're gonna do is transition this library into a student success center. And it's to provide students with a state-of-art building with study spaces and collaborative working environment. Uh, there's gonna be esports in there, a grab-and-go food spaces. The exterior of the building will remain the same and it doesn't change from the original design, and these are renderings of the finished product. There's also a rendering of the study spaces on the inside. There's also gonna be large AV format, um, meeting and presentation in, in these open spaces. I don't have a rendition, rendering of it though. Moving on to the next project, right down on University, this project just got completed. It's the Bachman Hall renovation, which is on the corner of University Avenue and Doe Street. It was a project that renovated the interior spaces of the, of the building. It houses the administrative offices. Our project replaced the roof, the AC system, and provided modern flexible office spaces and six large conference rooms. The original style of the building was preserved. These are actual photos of the building, they're kind of distorted because of my PowerPoint, I guess, but this is our, um, this is the Board of Regents' Meeting Room. This is the interior space of the lobby, which kept the same look. Moving on to the next slide. We've got a lot of roof work going on, um. The, this, this photo is of the School of Architecture, which just got completed. Uh, this photo is of the law school, which is ongoing, um, it's a combination of the law school and the law library. This photo is of Post Building, which is, you can see the crane right now, which is currently in, in progress. And this photo is of the Biomedical Sciences Building. And if you notice, these, these pedestals on each roof are, are designed to, for a PV system to be installed. So this is kind of a general, um, description of, of each roof project. So it's not just the roof, but it's small concrete, crack repairs, um, putting in these pedestals, putting in safety anchors, and that sort of thing. I mean, moving on to the next project. We just completed the renovation of the, these round dorms, I call it, the Hala- Hala Aloha Dorms, which, which is made up of four dorms. Um, it was a renovation of common spaces for all four dorms. These are before and after photos of the lobby area for the Moki Hana Building. This is the before and this is the after. This is also the lobby area. The next slide shows the check-in area, um, kind of before here and after. And then one of the study lounges, this is a before shot, where it's all cleaned out, you can see the dilapidated ceiling tiles. And this is an after shot. So that project, they basically did a lot of renovation of common spaces, they removed the carpets, polished the concrete floors, put new paint, did some finishes, um, replaced the plumbing fixtures, and did new lighting for all the restrooms, lobbies, and recreational deck. These dorms housed the freshmen, so I think it was a welcoming refresh for that dorm. Next slide, next project. Down at Lower Campus, um, the old grass fields, which is this photo here, is, is gone now. And it's gonna be renovated to house the new track and soccer teams. This is a current photo. What's going on right now is they're installing the, the drainage curb that goes on the inside of the track. This is a rendering of the entrance coming from Halele Road, which is that road on Lower Campus. Um, this is phase one of the, of the facility upgrade. Phase two is to include lighting and some seating, some beacher seating, but it'll be home to the UH women's soccer team as well as the track team. Uh, part of this project, there was an old compost pile, mulching pile that was back here, and we need to relocate that compost pile. Next project. We just completed, uh, upgrading the exterior lighting along Miley Way, this is along Miley Way and along East West Road on both sides. These are the old lights. These are the new lights, kind of distorted, like I said on my photos. But it was basically, um, their LED, not lead, should be LED fixtures, uh, with new concrete jacket conduits and cabling and new metering with electrical cabinets. If you walk campus about a year ago, you'd notice the electricians working up and down these sidewalks. Uh, next project is the landscape building improvements and renovations. So if you walk on campus along this fire lane from Pomona Road, you notice this black dust screen. Uh, what we're doing is constructing a new landscape building, with, this is a picture of the old landscape building, which is very old and rusted and, uh, pretty close to, to, to falling by itself, um, without any repairs being done, so. We're gonna build a new building here, this is old parking lot, they're gonna knock down this building and relocate the parking lot to here. Next project. Miller Hall Window Replacement Exterior Repainting. So if you walk around campus, you'll see Miller Hall with, with boarded up windows, um, we are replacing all of the steel windows with aluminum replica windows. Don't wanna change the look too much. Uh, we are removing all of the window AC units and putting in a new AC system. Uh, there's a lot of hazardous materials that need to be done and the building will be painted. Next project. Doe Street Mixed Use Housing, so this is on Doe Street, um, this project is a P three, a public-private partnership, and is being managed by the university's Office of Strategic Development and Partnership, and not our office, so. Um, we don't, we don't go on the project, but we do get updates monthly by the, by the contractor. Uh, it's basically gonna be for mixed-use housing, and the childcare facility will be, um, part of this front tower, I believe. There's, so there's two towers, there's a back tower and a front tower. Um, I think the front tower, the back tower seventeen stories. And I might be mistaken, but the front is either seven or nine stories, somewhere in that range. So this is actively going on on Doe Street. This is the old Noah Warehouse, and the Noah Building was in front of it on Doe Street. Next project. Um, this is not in Manoa, but this is a project that our office is managing. Currently going on is the Restaurant and Auditorium and Innovation Center. Phase two of KCC's Culinary Institute of the Pacific. Um, when it's all done, there's gonna be a new restaurant and an auditorium, and like I said, an innovation center for, for the students. We've got a bunch of other projects going on with a little too much to put photos of, but there are a lot of fire alarm upgrades going on right now.
Ross? All right, real quick, this is, um, Vice Chair Zane, and was, uh, timekeeping here. Uh, it's been about ten minutes, uh, can you, uh, just, uh, you make a little quick one and finish up real quick, we appreciate that.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, like I said, HVAC system upgrades, electrical service equipment upgrades. Um, just something I just thought was interesting, this went in about a year ago. There's a child in timeout, um, sculpture on a bench, right between Dean Hall and Gartley Hall. As far as projects that will begin in the future, um, the new Snyder Building would be in, um, going up, starting on or about early of next year. It'll take the place of the old Snyder footprint, which is right here. Um, it does, this is renderings of the new building. These are renderings of the building from the back, it does include widening McCarthy Mall and refreshing it. Next project starting soon is the demolition of this portable building, which is right across the Stan Sheriff Center. Um, it was the old administration, financial management office, um, also up by um, University Labs, who's that old caretaker's cottage that's slated to be demolished too. It's vacant and not being used, but it was, uh, built in nineteen forty-one. Next project, it's gonna start soon, is the demolition of the former PBS Building. Um, I believe we're waiting for ship D to approve the permits. And other projects that will be coming on shortly is the replacement of the HVAC system on Biomed Building. Um, the Duconum Pool Stands will be getting coated, and the Makai Research Pier out in Waimanalo will be going for some, uh, concrete repairs. And that's basically all I got, um, I'll, I'll, I'll stop sharing. And I'll take any questions.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Richards. Uh, I do see a re- handroom from Dan Shong, but first you have a guest who's been waiting, um, for us a while in person, uh, and I'm not going to, I, I have some idea of what he's gonna present to us on, but I don't want to, uh, steal his thunder, so I will turn it over to, uh, former Governor Neil Abercrombie, who is with Anson Wu and Chris Moylan at Kapal Mahale to, uh, present what he wants to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and thanks, Mr. Moylan, for your courtesy here, uh, and, uh, o- over, over at the Department of Community Services, uh, building. And I appreciate Mr. Richards', uh, uh, presentation, uh, but of necessity, I, I believe the Chair, Mr. Chairman, I hope you got our, my, uh, email earlier today, which included, uh, the letter from, uh, Governor Green, uh, uh, of, from last June. Uh, and I thought it needed to be shared. The presentation that Mr. Richards, uh, gave in part, um, will go to the Regents', uh, tomorrow, uh, as part of the, uh, uh, budget uh, negotiations and, and presentation that the Board of Regents will have to approve, uh, to be sent to the governor and to the legislature. And we're particularly ancient, I, I, I'm obviously not speaking for the governor as such, and I'm not speaking for the Board of Res- uh, Regents as such, but as a member of the Board of Regents and as someone who represented, uh, the University of Hawaii in various legislative and executive capacities since nineteen seventy-four, uh, I, uh, I felt it was important, uh, very important that the, this, this be shared with the board, because we're go- the Board of Regents is very anxious to, uh, work with the, the Neighbour- Neighborhood Board Number Seven, uh, to see to it that we have a coordinated and, and, and hopefully cooperative, uh, uh, set of, of, uh, resolutions to the ver- to various issues that are going to affect Manoa. Um, Mr. Richards mentioned, uh, at one point, um, the PBS Building. Uh, there is some argument as to whether that should be demolished at all, uh, at the present time, because that represents the Eva property. Um, possibly Mr. Richards was gonna go a bit further in detail had we had more time. But, uh, the, my duty here tonight is to indicate to you, and, and I've sent the letter to the chairman and hopefully will share with the rest of the board. I'll read it very, very quickly. This has to do with, uh, for, location for your, your board members. The 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 EVA side of University Avenue, uh, at Metcalfe Street and University across from Bachman Hall. You saw the renovation earlier tonight in Bachman Hall. That's fifteen acres. You may not, uh, be aware of how how big that property is. Um, it has University Lab School, the School of Education, the the formal, former PBS building, uh, child, uh, uh, care facilities and and a field there, fifteen acres. The, on, there was talk, uh, and has been talk of trying to turn that into a commercial venue. It's very important for the Neighborhood Board, and Mr. Moylan is looking at me right now saying, I'm sure this is something the Neighborhood Board wants to know about, is that if fifteen acres are gonna be turned into a retail commercial, uh, uh, competition with what, uh, Kamehameha Schools and and Bishop Estate is gonna do with Fox Alley and that whole area, uh, uh, varsity circle that they're that they're redoing. Needless to say, and not to take any more time of the of the board tonight, we're gonna have to have some discussions with the, and presentations to the Neighborhood Board, uh, in in the immediate future, because the governor is presenting his first real budget that he's totally, uh, um, responsible for to this legislature. It'll be a new legislature with a new, uh, Speaker of the House. So this is, uh, believe me, the Neighborhood Board Number Seven members, uh, this is not an abstraction that that you are going to be involved with concerns, uh, and 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 views and opinions with respect to what's gonna happen with the University of Hawaii at 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 Manoa. Whether it's the EVA complex, as to whether it's gonna be commercial or not, uh, St. Francis is still an issue that has to be, uh, taken a look at as to where the university might be able to be helpful in that regard. Um, I can just add parenthetically, this happened before I got on the Board of Regents. Uh, I I regret that the university did not make a concerted effort to purchase the St. Francis property. I wish we had landbanked it and we we're gonna, and we have to deal with the with Paradise Park, uh, uh, and and Lion Arboretum and and what the university might do or not do there. All that's to come up. Within the immediate prospect then, uh, the the letter from, uh, Governor Green dated June tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, to the to the Board of Regents is the Dole and Metcalfe Property. I'll just read it. It's 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 not too long. Um, "University of Hawaii at Manoa faces critical decisions regarding the future of the College of Education campus." That's what the governor's calling it. "Decisions made about the College of Education's future must factor into a broader future of the UH Manoa campus in the decades ahead. It is my administration's position," now I'm I'm quoting the governor here, it's not not me speaking for the governor, but but saying what the governor has written. "It is my administration's position that the parcel occupied by the College of Education and University Lab School be used only for educational purposes. The land holds significant value to the state of Hawaii in terms of its open physical space as the gateway to Manoa and its potential to serve our community's educational needs. As a steward for education in Hawaii, it is imperative that the university prioritize the well-being and advancement of our educational institutions, ensuring they have resources, space, and support to thrive. Discussions about the future of this campus should not result in displacement of any tenant who actively delivers quality educational services to the children and adults of Hawaii. Tenant displacement disrupts the continuity of education and undermines our efforts to provide accessible and inclusive learning opportunities for all. As tenants, institutions like the University Lab School must be incorporated into the parcel's future plans. Current zoning only permits low-density commercial development of the fifteen point four acre property. However, there are ample opportunities to expand the educational mission of the Dole and Metcalfe Superblock while still retaining its existing tenants by leveraging Hawaii's economic strengths. For example, there is a great demand for a research and development center catering to the state's fast-growing healthcare industry, particularly geriatric sciences, sports medicine, and nutritional sciences. Affordable housing, senior faculty housing for university's aging faculty population, and a longevity institute for Hawaii's growing senior community present other potentially rewarding opportunities. This matter requires the utmost care and consideration for the long-term interests of our state and its residents. Future plans for the parcel should not displace any tenant who is currently providing educational instruction, and that any decisions regarding its future are made in a manner that upholds our commitment to education and the well-being of our community. Thank you for your attention to this manner, uh, matter. I appreciate your service to our university and its broader education of Hawaii's people. Mahalo, Josh Green, Governor, State of Hawaii." This was the letter addressed to the Regents, which I now share with you and and the board and share, uh, and and I'll just, I'll conclude by reading the letter that I wrote to the chairman. "I note Board Number Seven is meeting tonight with the University of Hawaii presentation under item number seven. I am forwarding a letter to members of the Board of Regents, of which I am one, by Governor Green concerning the so-called EVA parcel at UH Manoa. I want to make certain that Board Number Seven members are informed of the governor's views. As to my knowledge, the B O R has not been given a copy of the UH presentation. We're receiving that copy tomorrow." Mr. Richards will, uh, affirm that, uh, as part of the budget presentation that the board is is undertaking now. We're we're going over the capital improvement, uh, uh, proposals, and we're going over the budget that we hope to be able to present to the governor and the legislature and to you. I'll be happy to forward the three hundred pages of the budget that I am now reading. If anybody has an interest, I'll be glad to do it. As a result, I can't be sure that the letter, that is to say, the governor's letter will be will be part of the material you were gonna review. I'm guessing that Mr. Richards was not provided with the, uh, the governor's letter as as part of the presentation, and that's understandable, because that he won't be presenting that, uh, to us, uh, uh, on the Regents tomorrow and in the weeks to come. "I'm sure you agree that the governor's views are critical when considering what positions, if any, Board Number Seven may wish to take or pursue regarding UH Manoa in particular. Please regard this note as a request to be able to speak on item seven tonight, when it is taken up by the board. Many thanks for your consideration, and let me repeat that, Mr. Chairman. Many, I I understand completely how difficult it is to get meeting agendas through on time. So since nineteen seventy-four, I understand that. So I I let me again then thank you for your consideration and thank the board members for their service. Thank Mr. Richards for staying up late, because I know he has to be up early tomorrow to to be able to make the presentation, uh, to the Board of Regents. And, uh, I assure you that the Board of Regents is is, uh, completely desirous of working with Board Number Seven and seeing to it that we come to conclusions that benefit the faculty, the students, uh, the staff, and the people of Hawaii with regard to higher education, particularly at the University of Manoa, uh, University of Hawaii at Manoa. And again, I thank all of you for your kind attention and courtesy."
Uh, thank you, uh, Governor Abercrombie. Uh, speaking for myself very briefly, I'm very happy to, um, have heard, uh, the governor read that that letter and have also received the letter in my inbox. I I think it's, uh, I think things are going in a very positive direction in that regard, and I'm grateful to the governor for coming down to Kapalamahale to, uh, provide us with that presentation. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, board members who have comments or questions to, uh, Mr.-- Yes.
Just, just one final thing. What I was thinking, everybody. Uh, I, I, I was not looking for special consideration, nor was Mr. Richards looking for special consideration. It's just that this issue is immediately before the Regents, probably within the next twelve hours. And I wanted to make sure that, given your time constraints, we were able to do it. And I I I thank the members of the of the congressional delegation and the the city and everyone else who who is still on the agenda tonight for that presentation. I assure you that, and I can speak for Mr. Richards in this regard, I assure you that these items are literally on on the table tomorrow, and we will be back in touch with with the board and its membership, uh, regularly. And thank you again.
And thank you again, Governor. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to board members, uh, Vice Chair Zane, uh, please mind the timekeeping. And I'm gonna go in the order that I saw people in, so it's gonna go Members Chong, then Kawano, then Watson, then Fukamoto. So Member Chong, please go ahead. Member Chong, you're muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Um, the question, again, I was kind of like listening in on your, um, all your projects, okay? The PBS building is gonna be knocked down, is that correct?
Yes, right now it's under contract to be demolished.
What? What was that again?
Yes, it's it's scheduled to be demolished. It's under contract right now.
And is that soon, or is it like a year away, or what does it look like?
Well, right now, right now, it's 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 with the, um, State Historic Preservation Department, uh, under permit review.
Okay, and so what, um, former Governor Abercrombie is saying is that you have plans for it to be, um, to take over that spot? Or is it something that might happen?
As far as the development of that of that area, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So once the building is demolished, I believe the finished product will be AC pavement?
And it's just gonna be left like that until they decide what to do with that property, is that it?
That's my, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, but there there's no plans yet, is that it? They're still trying to figure it out, is that what's happening now?
Yeah, as far as, as far as I know, the building is gonna be demolished, and it's gonna be finished with pavement. That area, that footprint.
I remember hearing something about in the news that they wanted to use it for, that building for something else. That's all. I was just questioning about that.
All right, I thank you, Member Chong. Uh, we're gonna go next to, oh, thank you, Member Chong. Oh, we're going next to Member Kawano. Member Kawano, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you, Ross, for your presentation. Two questions. First one is, um, can you send a copy of the presentation I have, um? Some of us are interested to look at it a little bit more detailed.
I forwarded to, um, I forwarded to Ensign Wu's.
Okay. Sorry, it's on a-- Okay, got it, thank you. My second question is, uh, I remember a few months ago, Elmer came to, um, talked about having an ENT, uh, site on lower campus, and I don't see that on your feature project. Um, I wanted to know how how is that going? When is it scheduled, or is it had to go through some kind of approval before you can move forward?
I'm, I'm, I'm not really, our office isn't involved with that that particular project. Um, I'm not really sure of the status. I can find out and let the chair know.
Okay, so you're not involved, so who would be involved in that?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
If, if--
Governor, please go ahead.
If Mr. Richards would yield, I could speak to that.
Governor, you're you're recognized. Please, uh, go ahead.
Okay, um, the, uh, the university is in the process, as well as taking up our budget of also selecting a new president. So, um, the issue of, uh, that the, that, um, I'm sorry, ma'am, I I missed the name when 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 your picture came up. But the the issue that you're raising is exactly the reason why the governor wrote his letter, is that these fifteen acres may become available for a series of projects, uh, a series of proposals to be taken up for consideration. And, uh, Mr. Richards is right that, um, presently, the 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 consultant has, I may be in the process of being hired, but we we do not have even a proposal for us just yet for the fifteen point four acres. But what you raised in terms of what the governor wrote is most certainly eligible for consideration there. Uh, I will give you another quick example, something I've suggested. I'm a liaison from the Regents to the Athletic Department. Uh, down in the in the in the, uh, area of of athletics that Mr. Richards, uh, showed you, um, the ROTC, uh, uh, program has been located there for years. It makes no sense to have it there. They 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 can't march, you know, they can't do their their, uh, their their, a lot of their programs, the fifteen acres might be, uh, available for that. So one of the things we've suggested to the consultants that are doing, uh, the the proposals for the athletic complex is that ROTC possibly think about moving up to the fifteen acres. So this is, it is terrific. For for Neighborhood Board Seven, this can be a very, very exciting year or so coming up in terms of of, uh, what the impact on Manoa Valley, uh, will be the Manoa, uh, Valley as a whole, community as a whole, in relation to the university.
Great, thank you for that, Governor Abercrombie. Um, Ross, any of you and Elmer can keep it posted for for that. It'll be appreciated when you get more info, but thank you.
I'll do that. Thank you.
That's, that's all.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Member Kawano. Uh, next, I'm gonna go to, uh, Member Watson. Please go ahead.
Thank you, um. My question, I guess, is to Governor Abercrombie. Sir, why doesn't the university buy the St. Francis property from Avalon at whatever price? Or maybe the state or the something could give them another property somewhere else to build that?
No, 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 don't bother her.
Because it's--
Baby, you wanna get better?
It's a one-time--
Okay, come.
It's a one-time chance for the university to have St. Francis connected to them, and we need that to happen.
I got you, I got you. Uh, but in in in, because of time, and 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 again, I appreciate the the board's courtesy in this. That's that's an issue. Uh, that, let me put it this way. My view on this is well-known, that the university should have have landbanked St. Francis, no matter what the price was and so on. But that's a question for another night. Mr. Richards is not in a position to give an answer or to offer some perspective on that this evening, and and it's his presentation, uh, that we have here. But I'd be happy to deal with, uh, not just me, but I mean, that's an issue that I'm sure the board is gonna have to come to grips with anyway. But I'm sure Mr. Richards will agree, not tonight.
All right. Uh, thank you, Member Watson. So I'm gonna call on a member Fukamoto, then a member Bosel, and that'll be the end for this agenda item. We're gonna move forward, so, uh, Member Fukamoto, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. This is more in the, um, more a comment than a question, but I wanna thank both Mr. Richards and Governor Abercrombie for coming in and informing us that the board is actually going to be hearing this important issue, because we've heard about this issue before in the sense that the the UH was saying, well, we may not want to keep the University Lab School there, we might might wanna move, but they always tell us, oh, that decision hasn't been made yet, so we don't quite know. And so, uh, both of you are actually informing us for the first time that this particular EVA parcel is actually going to be developed, or there are plans for this. And, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, this board, or I'm speaking it for myself, as a board member, we welcome the opportunity to have some input into this very important question. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Member Fukamoto. Now I'm gonna call on Member Bosel. Uh, Member Bosel, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh. I have two very quick questions. One was for Governor Abercrombie. Are you, um, are the Board of Regents tomorrow taking up any issues to vote on? Or are you just getting this presentation presented and, you know, having discussion? Is there anything up for a vote tomorrow?
No, tomorrow's, uh-- Is the question, is anything that we've we've been discussing up for a vote tomorrow, is that the question?
Uh, yes, or is anything regarding UH's, um, you know, Manoa campus properties for a vote tomorrow? The direction, I mean, and develop any of the properties in Manoa.
The correct answer is, is that-- The correct answer is, is that Mr. Richards and/or his colleagues will be making the presentation to us tomorrow, and we will, we will vote on a budget which will include capital improvement projects and, and, uh, uh, consider various proposals, possibly even including a, a consulting contract, uh, for, uh, examining the fifteen acres, that will come at us, at a separate time later, later on. But, so it's primarily presentation tomorrow, uh, and, and, and to publicize it to the public. That, what Mr. Richards was presenting to you tonight, which is, I believe, on your website, is also on the Board of Regents website, on the university website, uh, for, for perusal, and, uh, and we will make a decision on some of these things later on. The, the, the disposition of the fifteen acres, that's something that's going to be an ongoing conversation for some months to come, for sure. And, uh, and the board will have ample opportunity to, uh, examine it and, and come to your conclusions and recommendations.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, and then, my second really quick question was for Mr. Richards. Um, I think that you said it was the, um, uh, Snyder Building, i- in regards to the updating of that, there was also going to be a widening of, I want to say that you called it McLaren or something?
McCarthy Mall.
Sorry?
Yes, it's the main, it's the main mall going.
Is it, is that going to include the removal of any of those large mature monkeypods, or any other large trees for the widening of? Okay.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna actually improve the seating around those trees. Right now is, it's like a CMU wall type of, type of wall around this, the tree, it needs to get expanded a little wider.
Okay, so removal in that, in that mall?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that was all.
The pavement area is going to get, pavement area is going to get wider.
Okay, and then, um, I would say if you already have an idea, sorry, very quickly, of what is going to be included in the next presentation, since you and I have been in communication, but this is an opportunity to get it out in front of the public, so that people know about this for the next, um, I, I believe it's not scheduled for our next meeting, but the following, right, meeting, um?
Yep, none in detail, super quick, super quick bullet points.
Yes, I, uh, just, just if you could speak to that, but, but again, remembering that I think what is of most interest to the Manoa community is less interior updates to buildings, but more what might affect the Manoa neighborhood. So, any circulation changes, any buildings that require construction, any long range or more medium range plans that will affect the neighbors and larger Manoa community. If you wanted to briefly let the Manoa community what, know that, um, we have planned another presentation and what might come in that, that might be a useful thing.
Yes, it would be, it would be the, the planning of the, and I, I wouldn't say long term, but the new future planning of what we kind of envision, um, the campus to be.
Okay, and I, I do think that, um, at least.
Sorry, um, Chair, do you want to continue?
Uh, super quick, anything like thirty seconds?
It's just that he and I were in communication about getting this presentation on, and I'm doing this on behalf of the community, and I just wanted to sort of clarify, that I think that most of the community is interested in things that will affect, you know, sort of, that are, that are seen from the outside and that are a- affecting the neighborhood at large, and we don't necessarily in future need to do as much time on, like, interior improvement project, necessary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Richards for coming in to present, and thank you as well to Governor Abercrombie for, uh, coming to present the letter. I'm going to move on from this agenda item in just a minute, before I do, I'm going to briefly mention that, uh, a few hours ago, I received an email from, uh, Keone Jeremiah, the, uh, Principal of the University Lab School, and he offered his mahalo for our board's support of the University Laboratory School with the, um, Neighborhood Board Resolution that we passed in, uh, March first of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, I didn't know that was coming up, but I didn't want to mention it earlier, because I wanted to make sure that the, uh, the governor had the chance to, uh, to break the good news to us. But, anyway, moving on to, uh, next item on the agenda, um, we're going to go back to, uh, C monthly reports. To C Council Member Calvin Seay, uh, we have Calvin Seay, our representative here, to give a quick report during our last twenty-five minutes.
Aloha, this is Pua from Councilmember Seay's office, thank you so much for your time, I'll try and make the report really quick. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that I put in, uh, Councilman Seay's, uh, monthly newsletter in September, um, in the chat, and also some important, uh, web links in the chat, uh, for your information. The other thing is, um, I have some announcements, the Manoa Valley District Park Roof Innovation is going to happen, starting on Monday, September ninth. The project aims to improve several areas of the large building, which actually has three roofs, such as gutters, louvers, insulation, and, uh, metal roofing. The construction will require the closure of the gymnasium that is adjacent to the recreation room and the bathrooms. Staging construction equipment for this project will also inquire, uh, require the close, uh, the closure of the larger grassy area on the Palolo side of the gym, and several stalls within the lower parking lot in the, um, by the community garden. The use of the lower parking area will close, um, the vehicular connection to, of Kahaloa Drive to, um, Olapua Street. Um, the other thing is that, um, we have the curb ramp project. The City and County of Honolulu Department of Design and Construction is still advising the public that the curb ramp project in various locations of Oahu started in April first, twenty twenty-four, and will be completed in October twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, that includes, um, Oahu Avenue and Comahamaha Avenue for Manoa. Um, I know I had some, we had some, our office had some concerns, um, and about, uh, traffic lights with noise meters. Um, there is currently, um, work, the Department, uh, the State Department of, uh, Transportation is currently, uh, working on a pilot project in Makiki, but currently they don't have a vendor for these particular speed, um, or not speed, but sound, uh, stoplights or streetlights. So, they're looking for a vendor, they're currently looking for a vendor, so anybody that has any questions regarding, um, the noise meters and streetlights, that would be to the State Department of Transportation. Um, the other thing is I wanted to speak to, um, everyone about is, um, there were, we had full council today, and we had a couple of resolutions that I wanted to note, uh, Resolution twenty-four, uh, dash two one six, urging the United States Department of the Navy and the United States Department of Defense, including the Defense Logistics Agency, to immediately implement weekly testing of all Navy Red Hill monitoring walls and drinking water walls for all chemical contaminants stemming from the past, uh, fuel and hazardous materials that were used, stored, or released at the Red Hill Bulk, Bulk Fuel Storage Facility. And the second one is, um, uh, let me see, hold on one moment. Okay, Resolution twenty-four dash one nine nine urging the Hawaii State Legislature to update and clarify the Hawaii laws relating to electric bicycles and electric dirt bike motorcycles. Um, and if you have any questions, that's the end of my report, um, I'm happy to, um, I'm happy to take them, thank you.
All right, we're between women's left, I'll take a quick question or comment from Member Watson, go ahead.
Thank you, my question is, if the Department of Defense and Navy does this weekly testing, it seems like the glitch in the plan is them releasing the results to the Hawaii Department of Health or to the public. They know a lot, they tell us nothing, so what does this resolution or bill do to address that? Because if they do all the testing and keep, keep the results to themselves, it doesn't help anybody.
Well, I know that, um, I'm going to get more information on it, it was just voted in council, so I can get back to you with more information, um, Member Watson, um, by next month, or if not sooner.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
All right, are we have any further questions or comments for the Councilman's representative, going once, going twice? We're seeing and hearing none, thank you, uh, Pua, for, uh, being here to present for the Councilman and take comments and questions. We're now moving to the next item on our agenda, which is Room numeral five, A, Senator Kailo Fukunaga, is Senator Fukunaga available?
Mahalo.
Oh, I see Senator Fukunaga is online, please go ahead, Senator.
Thank you very much, uh, I apologize for sending my report to the Neighborhood Board members, uh, quite late. We spent the day, uh, touring a number of the sites on Maui, where Hiko has undertaken a series of, uh, restoration, uh, activities, and it was particularly of interest to me, because we have so many, uh, older falls and lines in the Manoa region. So, we're hopeful that we will be able to share a lot of the information we learned, partly, um, in public meetings, as well as, uh, future gatherings in Manoa. One key thing I wanted to highlight from my report was, uh, Bill twenty-four, which is the, uh, PUC Development Plan Amendment, which, uh, was, um, the subject of a community briefing in August. Uh, is kind of an important bill for the Manoa and university region, partly because the city does have, uh, plans to increase density and infill housing in Makiki, as well as in this, uh, South King Street, Bertanya Corridor, as well as in Makalimo Iliili. So, when you talk about impacts to the Manoa region, all around the Manoa region is also an area that is, uh, under consideration for increased, uh, density. So, I encourage board members to get involved. The, uh, council is going to be taking testimony on Bill twenty-four during the September and October meetings, and, uh, we have been working with, uh, some of the condo neighbors for the Ikenakea development in the area near Punahou School, where I hope that we will be able to, uh, make recommendations for some changes in that region. So, other than that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any brief questions or comments for the Senator, going once, going twice? Um, Member Watson, a quick question or comment, go ahead.
Thank you, um, can you, Carol, can you or Andrew introduce legislation again to try to restrict the two oh one H thirty-eight to the transient oriented development, as opposed to letting them stick them wherever they feel like it? I mean, it needs to be cleaned up, and then we'll all stop worrying and be able to get on board with helping them find areas along the rail or the transit oriented development without it being in our backyard. So, it'll just change the mindset of everybody, and we'll all breathe a sigh of relief if the legislature will clean up their mistake, thank you.
Well, we still have Act, uh, what is it, uh, Act thirty-nine, you know, Senate Bill thirty-two oh two to deal with. So, whatever we do with two oh one H, we are still going to have to deal with some of the changes that the legislature did adopt, but happy to, uh, introduce legislation.
All right, thank you, Member Watson, um, I see no other hands raised, so thank you, Senator Fukunaga, for, uh, sticking with us to the very end once again, to take questions and give your presentation, and, yeah, we will, we will see you next month, thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going next to, um, letter B, it's Representative Andrew DeCulia Garrett. Um, so, the representative informed me that he's currently on a travel delegation to Japan. Uh, typically, he would send one of his staffers here, but, um, the State House has several temporary staff during the session, but only one year-round staffer, and Representative Garrett's year-round staff, staffer recently vacated her position. So, uh, there's no one available for that presentation, uh, tonight. Next, we're going to Room numeral five, letter D, uh, Governor Green's representative, Lacey Goshi, is Lacey available?
Oh, welcome to Elmer Kai. It's me, Ensign.
No, it's, uh, my agenda says D first before E, um, oh no, I'm sorry, you're right, I skipped over C. Uh, yes, let, let her see, University of Hawaii, Manoa Updates, Elmer Kai, do you have a brief report?
Hello, Chair, thank you very much, uh, we have, you guys have a lot of presentation on UH itself. Um, just so that you know, we started school, as you guys obviously noticed. Uh, we do have a lot of activity on campus, um, ranging from orientations, um, events at lower campus and so on. I'll keep it very short, um, I'll present a better presentation next month, um, because you won't have a, a more intense stuff, and I'll be able to answer some of the questions that you guys raised with Ross them, and bring it back.
All right, thank you, Elmer, do you have any, uh, brief questions or comments for Elmer Kai, going once, going twice? Okay, if you're hearing and seeing none, thank you, Elmer, for sticking around to the end, we'll see you next month. All right, now we go to, uh, Room numeral five, D, Governor Josh Green's representative, Lacey Goshi, Lacey, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here, thank you so much, um, so just some brief highlights from Governor Green's newsletter. Um, in his governor's message, he extended a mahalo to all of the partners and everyone who was involved to help, um, with recovery efforts for Maui's displaced residents, um, there was also a new school and a new health clinic. Um, also in the newsletter, um, they recently had a federal funds summit. This is part of the governor's investing in Hawaii's Future Initiative to maximize federal funding for the state. Um, and to learn more about the investing in Hawaii's Future Initiative, um, you can visit governor.hawaii.gov/federal-funds. Um, also wanted to point out that, um, the state is always looking for qualified and dedicated employees. So, if you or anyone you know is interested, please check out the state's recruitment website. Um, all of the links I mentioned, including the newsletter, are at governor.hawaii.gov, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lacey Goshi, do we have any, um, questions or comments briefly for the governor's representative, going once, going twice? Okay, thank you as well for sticking around to the last fifteen minutes, and we'll see you again next month. All right, and we're now going to Room numeral five, uh, letter E, uh, Governor Ed Case's representative, is Julia here? Julia for, um, Congressman Ed Case, going once, going twice? Okay, I'm not hearing anyone from, uh, our congressman's office, so we're going to go ahead to board business, and we'll get as much of this done as possible. So, first I'm going to ask, do we have anyone who wants to fill a vacancy for Subdistrict Four? If so, we're not going to do the vote tonight, but if someone's interested, let me know, and I can put you up at the first thing on the next meeting. So, do we have anyone who, who has an interest in filling one of the Subdistrict Four vacancies? If so, please identify yourself. Going once, going twice, okay, we have no one interested in filling a vacancy. Now, we're going to Room numeral six, letter B, Approval of the Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
The minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I heard Member Watson first, and then I saw, um, Member Moylan aggressively gesturing that he's seconding. So, I'm going to count to the second from Member Moylan, uh, do we have any discussion?
Oh, no, uh, he, he, he was raising his hand about something about the minutes.
Uh, okay, okay, I'll count Robert Zenas having seconded, because I, I heard him first in seconding. So, Watson has moved, Zena seconded, Member Moylan, please go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, there, usually one would ask if there's any corrections before you make a motion. There's a couple of minor corrections that I want to suggest for the minutes. Uh, first, I think in item one, the call to order, where in boldface it says quorum was not established, was is all caps, and not is not, I think it's supposed to be was is in lowercase and not is caps, and perhaps that could be fixed. Secondly, in, uh, item three, election of officers, this says that there was, uh, it leaves out some of the discussion for Chair, there were two other nominations for Chair. One was a self-nomination that was rescinded, and another was another nomination that was declined. Those should be in the minutes too, because otherwise they're misleading, with those two corrections.
I'll, I'll ask Ensign on this, because we had issues previously with how much stuff gets included in the minutes, or it doesn't get included in the minutes. So, Ensign, are you able to do the two things that Member Moylan suggested, uh, fix the capitalization of was not, and also include, um, stuff about nominations of people who weren't actual candidates or Chair, is that doable?
Uh, for bike, uh, for Chair.
Just mentioning that there was a self-nomination, mentioning that there was a person who, uh, declined nomination?
Okay, yeah, I can add, I can add, um, Watson's one, but like, uh, for, here's one for Watson Bosel, and, but, uh, for Chair Zane, his one, he said he would only if, i- if I remember, he said he would only be, uh, the Chair if no one else. he said he would only be the chair if no one else wanted it.
Well, you can check the tape, but it started out as a self nomination that, okay, in that case I'll withdraw. Whatever, we should, we should include that.
Yeah, I'm not remembering it exactly myself. So Ensign, are you able to look at the tape and have it reflect whatever the tape says?
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend minutes in the way we just said, so that was not as fixed? And the chair discussion gets more detailed to reflect whatever the video shows?
So move.
Okay, Moylan, do we have a second? All right, I got her second from Bosel. So that's a motion on the table now. Um, so do we have any opposition to approving the minutes with those changes discussed by Member Moylan going once? Going twice. Okay, hearing no opposition, it is pass those changes. Ensign, please make those edits between now and next meeting, if possible. Um, we're now going to updates. So first, update on the primary urban center development plan. Do we have any information on that? Tom Heinrich, I see your raised hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very quick, as Pua had referred to earlier. But I just want to note for everybody that the next public hearing in the community on the primary urban center development plan is scheduled for Monday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM at Kauanaka Middle School, which is just off Poly Highway. So that is the next community meeting as a formal public hearing of the City Council in order to take testimony on the proposal. So you've got a little bit of time to take a look at what Pua was referring to in terms of increased density in our area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And I noted a Member Watson shaking her head when asked if there's any news. So I'm guessing nothing else. I'm not going to ask your questions or comments. We're running out of time. I'm going to move to the next thing. Next thing is letter D, update on the Manoa Banning Court. Do we have an update on the Manoa Banning Court situation?
Nothing at this time.
All right. And do we have an update on the, on all Hawaii flood mitigation?
All right. Do they have any update?
Chair, my, my internet froze. No update.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. So next item is presentations. We already did that. Last, we're going to go to community concerns. Some Manoa Neighborhood Board in-person meeting location. I just want to let people know that I talked to Principal Gussman earlier today. He informed me that the issue is that the janitors who are in charge of locking up after meetings require that our meeting adjourn by nine. So that raises an issue of do we want to shorten the meeting to two hours? Or do we want to have it start an hour earlier or something? We're not going to have a substantial discussion on that tonight because we have five minutes left. So I'm not going to ask for one. I just want people to know. I talked to Principal Gussman. He said it's doable to have Anoalani as an in-person meeting location, provided that we adjourn by nine. And I also mentioned the idea that someone mentioned to me about a board member having the key and holding on to it to get into the facility. He confirmed that we cannot do that for security purposes. So that's all I have on in-person meeting location. Do we have any other?
Thank you very much, Chair, for checking on that. Thank you.
No problem, Watson.
I think we could make it work with either a two-hour meeting, which I'm sure we would all love. And then if we have business to continue, we could call a special meeting somewhere if we want in a parking lot. Doesn't matter. And that's just great or start at six o'clock. Because a lot of, if the senators are going to hold a forum or something, they start at six o'clock or 6:30, right? So we could start at 6:30 and go three and a half hours and leave.
All right. And yet we're going to, we're going to have a further discussion on this to try and balance everyone's schedule out, you know, life wise and work wise. But this is going to be on the agenda for the future to potentially make something happen there. Member Moylan, do you have a very quick comment or question?
Yes, I request that you create a PIG, a subcommittee for us to work on this so that we don't have to try to do it in real time at the end of the meeting. There's several different options, one of which I just got some new information on. And I think we should do that as committee and bring it back to the full board.
So I'll answer that. So I'm not going to get into it now because we have five minutes. I'm willing to discuss in next meeting. Long story short is that our board tried out things like committees, not for, not for minute action groups, but committees which were similar and a board member is like the fact that some people were getting information, others weren't. And so the decision, I think a year or two ago, was to discontinue that. I'm willing to put it on the agenda for next meeting if there's time so that we can have that discussion again for members who joined recently. And that goes as well for a Member DiMarco because he also wanted to talk about potentially making a planning zoning committee or something like that. So we can put that on the agenda for next month. And if there's time, we'll have that discussion and see where we're at. And I see Member Watson shaking her head. We'll talk about it next month, just so everyone's on the same page.
No, I think we should do it next month, but I'm thinking there's no planning committee, right?
Yep.
We don't need that again. Yeah, we had a real problem with that one, but.
Sorry, sorry, we're running out of time. It'll be on the agenda.
Would be great.
Wait, sorry, repeat that last sentence, please. Did you say you do want a PIG for finding in-person meeting group or in-person meeting location?
No, I think we just will address it as a whole. We've had PIGs on that before and we all explored and we reported back. And, you know, I think we have to pursue what we can with Noelani and have a two and a half hour meeting start a half hour earlier. So put that on the agenda and this board can decide on that. It's a great idea. And Mr. Moylan wasn't here then, but we explored these things ad nauseam and went to everybody and church groups and everything to try to make it happen. And we've really done the work on this and the answers, but no, and you know that, Dave Nagaji. You, you did it with the Innovation Center and all kinds of stuff. So I think we should try to capitalize on the Noelani school for a two and a half hour meeting, period.
All right, I'm going to end the discussion on this because we got two minutes left. I'm going to put this on the agenda next month, just so we can discuss it, even if we don't vote yes on it. Be good just to block off time to discuss the issue for those who are new to the board. So now I'm going to move to announcements. Friends of Manoa Library Book Sale is going to be Saturday, September 14th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Sunday, September 15th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Volunteers are being sought to assist with setting up the book sale. You can donate books for the sale by dropping them off at Manoa Library. Next announcement is that our next regular board meeting will be held Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 via WebEx Online, the online platform with an in-person location, Kapalamahale Conference Room 153, for those without internet capabilities.